Agents to the flag of the United States of America. Public for wishes, fans.
Madam Secretary, has this meeting been properly advertised according to the sunshine laws?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
Thank you very much. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Candell?
Here.
Mr. Allegra?
Here.
Mr. Elmeyer? Ms. Lorman?
Here.
Mr. Mueller?
Here.
Mr. Shaw? Mr. Velosen? Councilman Zabrowski?
Here.
Chairman's high.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Memorial's Aktion of Resolutions. First, the Andrew and Deborah Wallentine Minor Site Division, 43 Pershing Avenue, 7 block 83.717 lot 12.
We need, Chairman, we need a motion on the Andrew and Deborah Wallentine, please.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Candell?
Yes.
Mr. Allegra?
Yes.
Ms. Lorman?
Yes.
Mr. Mueller?
Yes.
Councilman Zabrowski?
Yes.
Chairman's high.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll analyze the circulation element for the community facility elements. Opted October 2nd, 2024. I need a motion to accept that. Sorry about that. On the circulation for the master plan. Need a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, any opposed? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call.
Ms. Lorman can't second that. She wasn't at the meeting. Yes.
Second.
Having a second and hearing no opposed. I'll take a roll call.
Mr. Candell?
Yes.
Mr. Mueller?
Yes.
Councilman Zabrowski?
Yes.
Chairman's high.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I need to accept the minutes from September 4th, 2024, except November 18th, 2024, and October 2nd, 2024. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion. Second.
Having a motion made and seconded. Anybody like to rebut that? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Communication agenda?
None this evening.
Okay. Site plan and subdivision.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Lawrence Sacks, on behalf of Masjid Sedar. If the board will recall, we were last here on September 18th. And at that time, we presented the testimony of the valet company and the manufacturer of the stacking system that stalled into the proposed garage, which will be underneath this building. They're both here this evening as well, if there's any questions, but I think we comprehensively covered that at the last meeting. And as I indicated back on September 18th, my plan tonight was to have our traffic engineer testify based on the submission of a revised traffic study that was submitted to this board and for review by your professionals. So we do have Mr. William Stimmel, who had testified previously, so I know he's still under oath. And as well, Mr. Chairman, if time permits, I would like to get into planning testimony this evening. So I do have our professional planner, Mr. John McDonough, here as well.
Thank you.
So if I can proceed, and again, Mr. Chairman, and I'll ask counsel, I believe Mr. Stimmel is still under oath, but if you want to swear him in, again, that's fine.
Yeah, Mrs. Stimmel, you still understand you're under oath based on your prior testimony in connection with this application?
I do, yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Stimmel, I know between the last time you testified, which was a number of months ago, when you had your initial traffic study, you had an opportunity to prepare a revised traffic study based upon some comments and recommendations from the board. So if you can give the board the benefit of your analysis on that revised traffic study.
Sure, thank you. This would be the revised traffic study with the date of October 2nd, 2024. I believe all the board members should have a copy of it. It's also been posted on the municipal website. There were four key points based on the conversations that were held at the last meeting where I testified and the subsequent meetings. And the, those are the fire hall counts. The applicant agreed to provide traffic counts at the Madison Park Fire Hall, where the mosque is currently holding their services on a typical Friday. We increased the growth percentage, which was a comment from Brightview Engineering. The growth percentage affects the increase in background traffic growth in the area of the site. We made mention of the updated parking calculations based on the provision of the parking lifts. And we noted that the service times for the proposed services, the applicant has agreed to limit the service times for the Friday prayer services from 12:30 to 12:50 and 1:50 to 2:10 on a year-round basis. So regardless of the time of the year, there would be a one-hour gap between the first service and the second service at the facility. So those elements were added to the revised study, as well as incorporating the revisions that were made to the study based on the two addendums, which include additional counts at the intersection of Ernston and Borden Town and the restriction of left-turn movements out of the western driveway. So with that said, I would like to not go through the entire traffic report as I had done the first time. I just hit the points where things have changed. Obviously, if the board or the public has any questions, we'll go back and touch on that. But toward the bottom of the first page of the traffic study, there's a note that 166 parking spaces will be provided on-site, where 121 are located in a below-grade parking garage. 57 of those 121 parking spaces are being provided via the lift mechanisms. And then the remaining 45 parking spaces are going to be in the surface lot. So the old plan had 109 parking spaces. There's 57 lift parking spaces, so the new total is 166. Moving ahead to page three of the report and the existing traffic volumes and data collection, there's a note that the mosque is not currently operating at the subject property at the request of the board and the public as well, to be honest. There were counts done at the Madison Park Voluntary Firehouse, where the mosque is holding services now. The counts were done Friday, May 17th, 2024, from noon until 4:00 p.m. We also collected additional 24-hour ATR data. ATR is Automatic Traffic Recorder. At the site frontage along Ernston Road from Friday, May 17th through Friday, May 24th of 2024, as requested by Brightview Engineering. The updated existing traffic volumes, if you will, are shown on Figure 2 of the report. Provides a schematic representation of the area. And for the purposes of this analysis, the Friday peak hour is based on data collected on Friday, March 1st, 2024, from 1:00 until 2:00 p.m. And the Sunday peak hour is based on data collected Sunday, June 18th, 2023, from 12:30 p.m. until 1:30 p.m. Moving on to page four of the report, under site-generated traffic volumes. Right now, at the firehouse, there are currently two separate prayer services occurring during the Friday afternoon peak period. Data was collected from 12:00 to 4:00 to capture all vehicular traffic leading up to the first service and after departing the second service with a substantial buffer on either side of that. During that four-hour window, a total of 194 vehicles enter the site. And roughly two-thirds of those vehicles were oriented to the earlier of the two prayer services. Given the location of the property, the adjacent athletic fields there, there is certainly a possibility that some amount of this traffic would be visiting the nearby park. But for the purposes of this report, all the traffic at the firehouse is assumed to be there for the prayer services at those times. Based on a schedule of events provided by the client and submitted to the board, the Friday afternoon prayers are expected to be the main generator of traffic associated with the mosque. The peak one-hour period of traffic at the firehouse has 132 vehicles entering and 110 vehicles exiting. In that hour, from 12:45 until 1:45, that's when that peak volume occurs. That captures nearly all the vehicles entering and exiting for the earlier service and a portion of the vehicles entering for the later service. And it's important to note that the way the services are set up at the firehouse right now, they do not provide that one-hour buffer in between. So the services at 216 Ernston Road, if the board looks favorably on this application, would be spaced out a little bit. So we're including both of the services, to an extent, in that one-hour peak period, when they'd be spaced out a little better at the site where this application is proposed. To present a conservative estimate of future operations, and when I say conservative, I mean not in the applicant's favor, these numbers were increased by 10% to 145 vehicles entering and 121 vehicles exiting. The analysis of the Sunday peak period and the trip generation associated with that period is largely the same as what had been submitted in the previous addendum, with the noted exception that the background traffic growth rate has been increased. We did contact the borough of Sayerville and the township of Old Bridge, spoke to the zoning officials in both municipalities about any other area developments. And the planning stages are under construction. They both advised that there were none. A number of members of the public had mentioned the arsenal development, which had recently become operational at the time of the last hearing. We did get a copy of that traffic study. It showed that the arsenal site is two miles away from the subject property. It did not include the intersection of Ernston and Borden Town or the section of Ernston Road across the site frontage in the analysis. So we did not factor that into our analysis specifically, although it would be accounted for in the background traffic growth rate in the area. So the comment from Brightview was to use the updated growth rate table from DOT, which shows annual growth of 2.75% for arterial roadways in Middlesex County. Over a two-year period, that's 5.58%. And that growth rate is factored in when you go from the existing traffic volumes on Figure 2 of the report to the no-build traffic volumes, which are shown on Figure 5 of the report. Site-generated traffic volumes, based on the fire hall counts, were added to the no-build traffic volumes using the same distribution as the site driveways had exhibited when we counted the active mosque operation at the site in April of '22. Those are shown on Figure 6 of the report. As with the earlier versions of the report and the addendums, we analyze the existing no-build and build conditions utilizing highway capacity software. The results of those analyses are shown on a schematic format in Figure 7 and 8 in the no-build and build traffic level of service figures. They're also shown in tabular format in the appendix of the report. And largely, the movements stay the same at the intersection of Ernston and Borden Town when considering the existing no-build and build conditions at the study intersection. There is one level of service deterioration. The eastbound through movement at the intersection of Ernston and Borden Town Road deteriorates from a level of service D to a level of service E during the Friday peak hour when comparing the no-build and build conditions. The other levels of service at that intersection remain the same. We also did an updated analysis at the site driveway. Levels of service at the site driveway operate at level of service D for both peak hours, and that primarily applies to the traffic exiting the site. The westbound traffic making a right turn into the site is generally unopposed. And eastbound traffic making a left turn into the site experiences very little delays. Parking supply on page six. I note that the site plan prepared by AWZ Engineering last revised July 11th of '24. That was the exhibit, which speaks about the lift operations and was, I believe, presented to the board at the last meeting, possibly two meetings ago. But again, July 11th, 2024, plan from AWZ Engineering notes that the parking calculation is 196 spaces for the combined place of worship, gymnasium, offices, and classrooms, whereas a total of 166 parking spaces are provided. Of course, a variance is required for that deficiency, as we had said before, and we continue to say, no other events will be occurring on the site during the Friday prayer service. And if you take the parking requirement for the place of worship alone, it's 151 parking spaces, based on that AWZ plan. In addition, we collected data at the existing firehouse during Friday services, which show a peak parking demand of 121 parking spaces, leaving a buffer of 45 between the observed parking demand at the fire hall and the proposed parking supply on the subject property. So based on the above, we believe that the proposed parking supply is adequate for the intended use of the property. Moving on to site layout and circulation. Much of that section, it stays the same. I did note that a total of 25 cars can be queued in two lanes for the valet operation in order to stage the cars to be loaded into lifts in the underground garage. I noted that, based on the volume of traffic at the existing fire hall and the distribution of traffic between the early and late services, the lifts would not be required for the later service. So based on the counts we've done at the other site and based on the anticipated use of the property, it appears that the lifts would only be required for the earlier of the two services. There was a question, I think the last time, about the Middlesex County review. I just spoke to it, spoke to Mr. Sacks about it a moment ago. We've provided materials to Middlesex County for review and approval. We've gotten a preliminary approval with the standard engineering comments requiring technical revisions to the plans and things like that. And the board had requested, or the board's traffic engineer, I suppose, had requested proposing a concrete island at the western driveway to better delineate the prohibition on left-turn movements out of that driveway and force vehicles exiting to the right. There was also a comment about providing a walkway from the building entrance out to Ernston Road. And the applicant has previously agreed to comply with those requests, subject to county approval, obviously. Again, it's a county road and requires their approval. That is it for the revised traffic report. I'd like to go through the comments from Brightview Engineering.
Chairman, if you don't mind, we can have Mr. Stimmel respond to Mr. Fischinger's report.
This is the Brightview Engineering report dated October 11th of '24. It restates the comments that were presented in the earlier review letter from Brightview with clarification on the points as to where they stand, and then also a few new comments introduced as well. The first comment on page two of the review talks about the peak hour selected for the TIA, the provision of ATR data, and the request for additional traffic analysis. And I suppose this is as good a time as any to mention it. I know it had been discussed before. Ernston Road is an arterial roadway. As everyone in the room knows, it experiences relatively high volumes of traffic throughout the day. The site, of course, redevelopment of the property will add some traffic to this roadway. This is a conditionally permitted use in the zone. It meets all the conditions and is treated as a permitted use. So the addition of traffic to an already congested roadway is not grounds for denial of the application. Ernston Road also is a county road under the jurisdiction of Middlesex County and has received, the applicant has received preliminary approval for the proposed site development and driveway configuration. We had met with Middlesex County. We had met with representatives of Sayerville several times before submitting the initial traffic study and had looked at various different access scenarios. One-way driveways, two-way driveways, bifurcated driveways. And this is what the county ultimately recommended. We are flexible, let's say, as to the access configuration. But the, you know, the county holds all the cards on that one particular issue. So getting back to the data collection point one from the Brightview review letter. We did collect ATR data. We went out to the site between May 17th and May 24th of 2024, collected ATR data, which has been appended to the revised report. The weekday morning peak period had a two-way traffic of 1,168 vehicles. The weekday midday peak period had a two-way traffic volume of 1,294 vehicles. And the weekday evening peak period had a one-hour traffic volume of 1,406 vehicles. So the morning peak hour experiences lower volumes of site-generated traffic, because the only thing that would potentially be occurring during the morning peak hour on the site is the typical daily prayer services. Experiences lower volumes of site-generated traffic and lower volumes of street traffic along Ernston Road. Then the midday peak period, which was the subject of analysis in the report. The weekday evening peak period experiences lower volumes of site-generated traffic, but slightly higher volumes of street traffic, about eight-and-a-half percent higher on the street traffic and about 66% lower on the site-generated traffic when compared to the midday peak period. You did do a quick analysis of driveway operations during the weekday morning and weekday evening peak periods at the site driveways, using the same methodologies that were in the updated report. The results of the analysis show that movements at the site driveway operate at level of service A for vehicles entering the property and level of service C for vehicles exiting the property. And that's largely a function of the much lower volumes of site-generated traffic for those daily prayers. We had submitted a schedule of operations for the proposed mosque within the traffic report and testimony, I believe, and we're on meeting five, so a little fuzzy, but I believe testimony related to that had been provided. The applicant has agreed that the only services which will be occurring during the typical weekday morning and weekday evening peak periods for street traffic will be those regular daily prayers, which again, have a much lower, much lower attendance, let's say, than the Friday afternoon services. So we did do a driveway analysis. We believe that's adequate to address the question. Comment number two from-
Bill, if I may, Mr. Chairman, before we move on, while we're on that item, I just wanted to clarify. So you said the, you assume, and I have not seen that analysis. I assume you'll be able to provide it.
I just did it today. I can certainly send you a copy.
Did I hear you correctly that during the morning and evening rush hours, the only event going on in the facility would be prayer services?
The only possible event that would be going on in the facility would be the prayer services. And that's only if the prayer times align with the morning and evening peak periods. So anything else? The Friday prayers, obviously, occur before the evening rush hour. Family nights, weddings, funerals, so on and so forth, will not occur 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., which is the typical peak hours.
And maybe I missed it. I know I was retained a little late in this application. So, and maybe you're getting to it, and if you are, we'll get to it when you're ready. So when are the, what I'll call the amenity space, the basketball court, the jogging track? When are those uses going to be used? Because it sounds like they're not going to be used in the morning. They're not going to be used in the middle of the day, and they're not going to be used in the evenings or on Sundays. So when are they being used?
Yeah, the, there was a discussion of having family nights on Friday evening, 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock Friday evening, after the peak period of street traffic. As far as the use of the other amenity spaces, you know, the client, I think, might be better equipped to answer that. But the point from the traffic engineering perspective is that they're going to be outside those critical windows for the street traffic.
Yeah, maybe I can clarify. And I think we even stipulated to this point at one of the earlier meetings that whenever there's ritual activity going on of any nature, the other activities won't occur. So in other words, the gymnasium is not going to be open when there's ritual activity.
And I understand that completely, and I've heard that, heard that. But I don't have a clear answer as to when will those facilities be used?
Yeah, and I think, again, we probably testified, and it might have been before you were involved, Mr. Fischinger, but I think what we would like to provide to this board, and I think I even discussed this with counsel, is I need to give you a schedule of when these events will occur, a written schedule.
No, we can't, we can't have the public speak and shout out. We have to let the professionals speak, and they'll answer the questions. At the end, you'll get to say everything you want. Mr. Sacks, go ahead.
Chairman, if I can finish without interruption, I would-
I would like it to happen too, Mr. Sacks.
Thank you. All right, so before this board deliberates on this application, and I would imagine it would be at the next hearing, we will provide that information well in advance of the hearing.
No. No, it's not the last meeting. I don't think we're going to get through all of this tonight. And, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to go from, at the end of this, where we're going, okay? Don't worry, you're not getting cut out.
And Bill, while we're still on this first comment, and the attorneys in the room can correct me if they believe I'm wrong, even if it's a permitted use, the planning board is, still has to confirm that the driveways will operate safely and efficiently. And that is the impetus for why I keep asking for traditional peak hour levels of service and analysis, to confirm that the driveways will operate safely and efficiently when the traffic on Ernston Road is at its highest. Typically, if we were doing an office building, the site peak and the road peak are the same time. That's why you do only see AM and PM. In this particular development, the traffic from the site doesn't necessarily correspond with the traffic from the road. That's why I'm asking to look at both, to confirm that the driveway will operate safe and efficiently. And that hap, and that the board has to find that, whether it's a fully conforming site plan application or not.
The board has to consider whether the site introduces a new safety concern, not just the fact that there's traffic on the roadway. It's difficult to pull out, because that, there's traffic on the roadway now. At times, it can be difficult to pull out if the site remains a single-family house. So really, you know, the, as a means to an end, there's a relevance to the traffic study. But the, we've counted, we've counted, we've counted, we've analyzed, we've analyzed. We've spoken to the county. It's a county roadway. The county has more or less signed off on it. You know, the client has been largely open to performing updated traffic counts. They've counted at the site driveway. They've counted at the intersection of Ernston and Borden Town. They've done updated counts when school was in session. They've counted Sundays. They've counted other sites. They've counted the fire hall. They've done ATRs. I understand what you're saying, but I think the applicant's position is that there's sufficient data provided at this point for the board to make a determination. And if the board disagrees, then the board disagrees, and we'll go from there.
I will point out that I've been asking for this analysis since April, and Mr. Stimmel just said he just performed it.
Go ahead. Mr. Chairman, if I may? If I may just, because I think it's kind of what we were talking about. If it's not appropriate now, please, you know, please let me know. But at the last meeting, since we're talking about the egress and ingress from the site, the, we're talking about parking, how it would work in the queuing. The prior witnesses had testified that there would be queuing within the site. And there was a question by one of the board members, and I have a note here, about whether that queuing will go spill out onto Ernston Road. And my notes say that the traffic engineer will address that. I just, since we're talking about the egress and that driveway is right now, I didn't know if this would be appropriate time to really address that question now, because I understand, you know, counties, it's a county road and so forth. But if the way the traffic, the parking analysis works and how it's going to be functioning with the valet, specifically with the Friday nights, I think we, the board wants to hear some testimony from the traffic engineer as to whether or not that will spill over into Ernston Road and cause any traffic issues in that manner.
Yes, good question. I did touch on it when I was going through the report. I looked at the exhibit prepared by AWZ Engineering with the revision date of July 11th, '24. Looking at sheet CO3, from the southeast corner of the building, there's a solid line shown across the driveway there. If you take that and extend it back, not quite, but almost, to the property line at the western entrance, you can queue 25 vehicles in two lanes. The exhibit that was prepared by the, by the valet operation, the valet operator, rather, showed additional queuing wrapping back around through the interior of the site, which I think would be, I would call it almost a little bit of overflow or extra queuing in case of, case of emergency. queuing in case of, case of emergency, not to say it would be an emergency, but I think 25 vehicles could safely queue on the subject property without causing an interference with site operations. And I think based on the 57 vehicles which would be oriented toward the lifts coming in over a period of a half an hour before the services, I think that 25-vehicle queuing supply is adequate.
Mr. Stimmel, that's based on an assessment that you only need 196 parking spaces, correct? That analysis you gave is based upon the assumption that you only need 196 parking spaces, correct?
The assumption is based on the parking supply proposed for the site and the, the area available for the queuing.
Okay, but you're going to need, you're going to need a variance for about 45 parking spaces or 30 parking spaces? Is that correct?
I believe 30.
30, but that's based off 196 parking space requirement, correct?
The, the variance, yes, it's based off that, yes.
And, and we're not sure if it's 196 parking spaces that's required under the ordinance, correct?
There, there, I'm sure will be some discussion of that.
Okay. And, and you're, I understand your testimony regarding this is a conditional use, and you generally can't look at the additional traffic that's going to be generated on Ernston Road, but based upon the fact that your, your client is seeking a variance for parking, you would agree that we can consider the impact of that additional, additional parking spaces that aren't being provided per the ordinance, correct?
Agreed. The, the, the whole package is under consideration, but we did count the existing facility and provide parking data based on that as well, too.
Perhaps, Mr. Stimmel-
Mr. Stimmel, you, you checked the existing facilities. Can you give us a comparison in size between these facilities?
The, the fire hall? I can tell you that the volume is roughly the same from when we counted the existing, the former site on 216 Ernston Road versus the fire hall. Didn't, it, it came out to be roughly 190 cars over a four-hour period for both of them. So we did not see a change in the site-generated traffic over the two-year period. So the, the comment from our side of the table is that the square footage of the building is not necessarily the best determinant of what the site-generated traffic is going to be, because of the fact that you've got this existing community here and an existing draw to the area, whether the site was, whether the mosque was in operation on the site or at the fire hall a mile away, roughly. So we believe that that is going to be a better determinant of what site traffic is going to be than just assigning a number to the, assigning a rate to the building square footage, because the, the difficulty is that you don't have 30 mosques in Sayerville. It's not like you're looking at a coffee shop or a fast food or a gas station. There's a limited data pool to draw from, and it's, to some extent, based on the demographics of the community. You know, the, you've got the location of it, and then with the site, you've got various factors that, that could be at play here, even though we're not saying that the basketball court, for instance, is going to be in use during the same time as the services are held. You know, you, you've got all these other factors, so I think it's hard to suss out from that exactly what's determining the trip generation, other than the fact that you've got the mosque on this site, which had been in operation in 2022 when we counted it, and now that group has moved to the fire hall, and we counted that as well. So I don't know the square footage is off the top of my head, but I don't know that that's the, the critical factor here.
Chair-
Go ahead.
Mr. Stimmel, did you review the CME report, revised report?
I was going to get to that after the, the BrightView.
My question is, did you do an analysis of what your opinion would be if the parking deficiency were 211 spaces as opposed to 30?
The deficiency was 211 spaces?
Yes.
That number had been, various parking numbers and headcounts for the square footage have been kicked around at the previous meetings. Again, based on my prior testimony, based on my testimony tonight, we believe those numbers are, are far beyond what the demand is going to be at the property. So, you know, if you had 300 or 800 cars all show up to get onto the property at the same time, obviously that wouldn't work, but we don't believe that's going to be the case here.
Okay, so you didn't, you didn't do the analysis, but you don't think that the deficiency is 211, though? Correct?
We did research counts at the existing property. Based on that, we don't think the deficiency in terms of the parking is going to be 211. We believe that there's adequate parking.
But you didn't do an analysis assuming, you know, your, experts can do hypotheticals with different assumptions, correct? You didn't do an analysis assuming the deficiency was 211 spots, correct?
So you're asking me to do a capacity analysis for the site based on the idea that there would be 300-something cars going to the site at one time?
I'm just, I'm just asking you, because the CME report notes that there's, as it stands right now with the application, there's a 211-spaced parking deficiency. And my question was simply, did you, would your opinions change if that was true and accurate, that there is a 211-spaced parking deficiency?
Well, the parking deficiency is a number on paper. That, that's the, the ordinance-based calculation, obviously, we give that some weight, but the, the real-world numbers that we're providing show that that is not the case. So if the real-world numbers showed that there were going to be three, that there were 300 cars at the fire hall now, we'd say, you know, we gotta, we gotta change something here. And in fact, we did revise the numbers based on the data collected at the fire hall. We assumed a more even distribution between the two services, when it turns out that in fact, two-thirds of the people apparently prefer to go to the earlier service. So we, we revised our analysis and we included that.
Okay, and that's, it's just based upon services at the fire station, not a 44,000-square-foot building that's going to be put on the site, which you would agree with me would attract, could attract more worshippers, correct?
Well, you know, Mr. Miller, I, I'm not sure that's the case. I don't think the size of the building, let me, let me just finish. We obviously know that the space of the ritual hall, the gents' hall and the prayer hall is limited. It's a certain size. The fact that the balance of the building has other amenities really is not something that should be factored into us. But I'd like to have, if we can, if we can have Mr. Stimmel go through the response to BrightView, and then certainly, you know, we can entertain any questions, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay with the board.
BrightView, okay?
That's fine with me.
Okay, and I thought that's what we were doing initially, so.
We got a little bit of wait.
So we are on comment two from BrightView. Comment two talked about the queuing across the site frontage, talked about testimony providing how the backups affect data collection. We did provide testimony about this at the last hearing. I did review five hours of video from the site when it had been in operation at 216 Ernston Road. And, you know, the, the queuing across the site frontage did occur from time to time, was very limited outside of a 20-minute period when the mosque exited, when the services being held at that time exited, and then later during that 12 to 4 window, another roughly 20-minute period when the Samsal School discharged the students. At both of those times, the queuing extended to or past the driveways, but I noted that traffic moved steadily and cars appeared to make the light within two cycles. It did not, interestingly, and I, I testified to this the last time as well, interestingly, the queues did not generally interfere with people getting in and out of the site driveway, because the motorists were, who were stopped in a queue, didn't appear to object to letting people in or out of the property at that time. So in addition to that, we had also agreed to provide police traffic directors, which was stipulated too on the record. The police traffic directors will be there during typical Friday services if this application is approved. And I, I think it had been discussed before, we would look to provide updated traffic counts if and when the site is approved and becomes operational, work out any traffic issues at that time with the board and their professionals. Comment number three from the BrightView letter talks about the selection of the intersection of Ernston and Borden Town Road and the, the count being done, or the, the data being utilized from 1:00 to 2:00 PM as the basis for the analysis, and then goes into peak hours for the intersection, peak hours for the similar mosques, et cetera, et cetera. We chose the 1:00 to 2:00 PM period based on earlier traffic counts when the mosque on the subject property was in operation. Based on the revised schedule, the busiest hour for traffic at the proposed site would be roughly 12:10 to 1:10 PM, when street traffic volumes are slightly lower. So to avoid giving the appearance of reducing the existing or background traffic volumes on the site, we maintain that 1:00 to 2:00 time period as the basis for the analysis. We, again, conservative, not in our favor, we continue to use the slightly higher time volumes, traffic volume from that later time period. Anticipated background growth, comment four, talks about updating the growth rate based on new NJDOT data. So we submitted the report initially, NJDOT had a growth rate of 1%. Through all the revisions, they had updated their table and showed 2.75%, which works out to be 5.58% growth over a two-year build-out period. So I believe that comment has been addressed. Comment number five talks about other area developments within the vicinity of the project, and testified and mentioned in the report that we spoke to the Sayerville and Old Bridge zoning officials and found no such developments, so I believe that that comment has been addressed as well. Trip generation, comment number six in the BrightView report talks about the fact that we have updated the traffic counts at the nearby firehouse where services are being conducted, resulting in 145 inbound trips and 121 outbound trips during the busiest hour. So again, that captures all of the first service and part of the second service, and includes a 10% growth factor over what was observed at the property. There was a, a further question from Mr. Fischinger about the persons present at the service at the firehouse. We did go back and parse that data from the fire hall a little bit further and found that the per-vehicle occupancy was 1.38 persons per vehicle, which is slightly lower than the, the two other sites we had looked at earlier in this process. We had collected data at two other mosques showing an occupancy of 1.82 and 1.88 persons per vehicle, so it's about half a person per vehicle lower at the fire hall versus those two sites. Comment number seven talks about the limited ITE data, talks about how, how comparable the facilities in East Brunswick and Somerset are compared to the proposed facility. I, I think I talked about this at the, at the last meeting where I testified, but possibly not. The, the two facilities we looked at, the one in East Brunswick is located along Dunham's Corner Road, which is a fairly busy two-lane road, primarily residential development around it, has a footprint of approximately 18,000 square feet and paved parking for 100 vehicles with an overflow parking area of an additional 50 vehicles. The Somerset site was located on a local road in a residential neighborhood and is a smaller facility, presents as a large ranch-style residence, has a footprint of approximately 2,500 square feet and a small parking area for approximately 16 vehicles. We, we did provide the occupancy per vehicle, and again, that's that 1.82 and 1.88 data set. Comment number eight from the BrightView review talks about the trip generation associated with an earlier version of the traffic study. I believe that's no longer relevant based on the revised data which has been collected and analysis which has been submitted. Comment number nine talks about the testimony that none of the amenity space would be utilized during scheduled prayers. Additional information and testimony should be provided. So to the extent that I understand how the site is going to operate, I, I provided that testimony. The Friday peak, Friday prayer services are the peak generator of traffic on the subject property. At times, the regular daily prayers will overlap with the morning or evening peak periods, but other than the potential for those overlapping prayers, which have much lower attendance, there will be no scheduled activities at the property during the peaks of the roadway traffic along Ernston Road.
All right, and Bill, while we're on that one, I believe Mr. Sax had already said that you would provide a schedule of when those amenities fit, and that's really where that comment is getting to, is what's going on with those other uses. So I believe that's, it's still outstanding, because we haven't seen it yet, but I think you can move on.
Thank you, just making a note. Comment number 10, and I guess we have, we have spoken about this already, but again, it ties into the weekday morning, weekday evening, Saturday midday time periods based on the schedule of activities above. Did provide an analysis at the driveway, which I will certainly provide to Mr. Fischinger, and testimony related to that item has been provided. Comment number 11 relates to the trip distribution. It appears from the information provided that the trip distribution for the site is based on the count data collected in April of '22. Absolutely correct. Additional information slash testimony should be provided regarding the applicability of the, using this data for a typical prayer service. And, you know, talks about doing, I, I believe, something along the lines of a gravity model or, or something of that nature to distribute site traffic. This is the rare case where we have a use on the site, which is the same as the proposed use, it's going to be used by largely the same people. We have the distribution of those people to and from the site under real-world conditions. It's not a projection, it's not a calculation. In my experience, I, I would say that I find that to be more accurate than a projection. And, you know, again, it gets back to the issue of you're, you're just splitting up the traffic slightly differently, and at the end of the day, what is the end result going to be? You know, it's still Ernston Road, you're still adding traffic to it, just in a slightly different form. So we believe we've analyzed it adequately, and, and we believe that the projection represents an accurate projection of what the site operation is going to be. Capacity analysis, this is kind of the same issue, I think, so I'm not going to go through it again.
Thirteen's the same thing, we've already covered it.
Comment number 14 talks about the full use of both driveways. Accounting for the left turn-out restriction at the west driveway, testimony regarding the applicability of this configuration should be provided to address operations when valet parking is being used, including if the driveway will be restricted to one-way in slash out during the valet operation. So this is a new comment. The valet testimony provided at the last hearing noted that the western driveway would be for ingress-only movements while the valets are queuing vehicles to be parked in the underground garage. Based on the data collected at the existing fire hall, I had mentioned this earlier, the lifts would not be needed for the second service. So the restriction on vehicles entering the property would only apply to the time period leading up to the first service, the earlier service with the higher attendance, and at that time, there are very few vehicles exiting the property. So I don't believe that that temporary modification for the valet operation would significantly impact the operations at the site. Comment number 15, level of service for the driveways utilizes a .98 peak hour factor. Not going to dive too deeply into the numbers, but basically, peak hour factor is a numerical description of how site-generated traffic is going to be distributed throughout the hour. So if you have 60 cars leaving a site one per minute, that would be a peak hour factor of one. If you have 60 cars leaving within an hour, all within 15 minutes, that would be a peak hour of .25. It can't go below .25. It's an interesting question, because obviously, there's going to be a peak to the traffic entering and exiting the site. The way we had done the analysis based on the counts at the fire hall does incorporate volumes from the two services, so it's, while it's not going to be a peak hour factor of one, it's certainly not going to be a peak hour factor of .25, it would land somewhere in the middle. Changing that peak hour factor primarily would affect the analysis as it relates to movements exiting the site driveways, because the site is, because the roadway is so busy, adding a small amount of traffic or modifying one of the factors has a somewhat significant effect on the analysis. So it does cause the- Um so it does cause the delays for those movements to increase, but that's for the Friday services when again, we have agreed to provide the police traffic director. So I think although it's a valid question, I think the the traffic directors are gonna mitigate that situation.
Chair, go ahead. Um Mr. Stimmel, how many square feet is the firehouse?
Still don't know that.
How many parking spots are at the firehouse?
The parking spots at the firehouse are they're partly striped. There there's two lots, the one on the, if you look at the building from the street, the ones to the left toward the baseball fields is not striped. Uh the one to the right, it has some striping, but it's very hard to see. Um based on my estimation, I came up with a roughly a hundred fifty parking spaces if you more or less follow a standard aisle width and uh parking dimension. Um but I am sure that from time to time, there have been more cars parked in there than that.
Bill, can you clarify that hundred and fifty number? Is that the what I'll call the right lot if you're facing the firehouse?
That's the two lots combined.
Two lots combined, thank you. That's where I wasn't, that's where I wasn't sure. And for the board's edification, I did go back and look at those numbers and Mr. Stimmel's calculations are roughly correct. The the more formal lot holds between eighty and ninety cars. Again, it's not really striped anymore and you can get a similar excuse me, a similar um roughly fifty to sixty cars on the other side near the fields. Assuming that cars park in an orderly fashion and fit it fit up, so. No, I don't know the square footage of the building either.
Mister Chairman, if if we can, I I know the court reporter is trying to take everything down, but when there's conversation from the public, when testimony is being provided, it's very difficult for that to occur.
Thank you. Please be advised.
Um the next comment moves on to the uh parking section. Talks about a parking requirement of three hundred seventy seven spaces calculated using one space per three occupants. Um I I think there's been an updated plan submitted, although it seems like uh uh Brightview and C M E may not have seen it, uh but it shows a parking calculation of one hundred ninety six spaces, and I believe that reflects a reduction in the assembly area. Um so I I think that may be some of the discrepancy when we're talking about these parking numbers here. Yeah, so the revised plans from A W Z dated July eleventh to twenty four show a parking requirement of one ninety six, whereas one sixty six are provided. Provided practical testimony related to the use of parking on the property and the parking demand at the current fire hall. Um the the data collected in April of twenty two shows a total of a hundred ninety vehicles entering the site during the two hour window leading up to and including the Friday prayer services. The May twenty twenty four traffic counts at the fire hall show a total of one hundred eighty eight vehicles entering the property during the same two hour window. Um comment number two.
Mister Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Stimmel.
Go ahead.
Before we get off that comment, can we get confirmation that our professionals have that that calculation and agree with that calculation? One ninety six?
Go ahead.
Mister Chairman, our report, we still raise the question, the revised plan that you're referencing, I don't think that that's been provided to our office or I think Brightview. So we need to see, and we say that numerous locations, our report, we really need to see the size of the different rooms, what the uses are, what the hours are, so we can come up with an accurate calculation. I thi- I think all that we saw was revised architecturals that had uh the size of the prayer areas based upon mats as opposed to just open areas. Aside from that, I don't think we've seen revised calculations.
We're never going to get through this if we don't behave. I I yeah, listen. If you're gonna talk, you have to do it amongst yourselves and we can't hear it, otherwise we can't go on. Thank you.
Ken, I'll I'll repeat, I we we were under the impression it had been provided, but if not, or if it's somewhere where where it can't be located in the municipality, we'll provide it again, Mr. Cornell, not a problem. And I'll provide it to Mr. Fischinger as well.
Uh back to the the Brightview report, it's at the comment number two under parking at the bottom of page six. Talks about the very limited I T E parking data published for this use, similar to the limited I T E traffic, uh trip generation data. Um and it it's kind of the the same thing, the the data is of limited utility when you're talking only about two data points. Um mentions that the parking at the fire hall uh shows a total of a hundred twenty one spaces uh at the peak plus additional spaces required for valet operations, weekly variability in attendance and future expansion. Um you know, there's uh no intent to expand the building at this point. Um so that that's that comment. Uh the capacity at the fire hall lot is a hundred fifty parking spaces we just spoke about, which represents a buffer of about twenty four percent over the parking demand at that location during the Friday service. Um if I hadn't mentioned it before, I should mention it now, it's certainly possible that a few vehicles included in the count were parking at the fire hall to get to the park. But we assume that they were all there for the religious services. Um based on the one hundred sixty six spaces provided, you've got a buffer of forty five parking spaces for the earlier, more heavily attended service. Even factoring in if all twelve of the valet operators drive their vehicles to the site, you've still got a buffer of thirty two parking spaces. And there was testimony provided at the last meeting by the valet operator uh that he did not think it was likely that all twelve of his employees would be driving their own vehicles to the site and they would uh find a way to shuttle them to and from the property uh if it became an issue. Uh comment number three is no longer applicable. Comment number four uh is please provide testimony regarding how the conversion from patrons to parked vehicles is determined. Um you know, i- it's um the 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 activity at the site based on the different operations um other than the Friday prayer service is largely based on how the site operates or how the site had operated under existing conditions. Uh there there's been testimony provided on several occasions that the regular prayer services which occur multiple times a day have much lower attendance than the Friday services. Uh there was discussion about the uh attendance at the the weddings, the funerals, the the family nights and other events, and to an extent, these are estimates of how the site will operate. Um as with the applicant stipulation that they would agree to provide the traffic directors during busier times uh during the Friday prayer services, uh that would apply to those other operations. But the expectation from the applicant based on the way uh the mosque operated on the site previously is that the those would all be much lower generators of traffic and lower generators of parking demand. So to an extent, that information is provided by the applicant, but it's um it's based on the knowledge of the current operation.
Bill, while we're on that one, um so you had said earlier, you did confirm the the number of people per vehicle at the firehouse, I believe you said one point three eight.
Correct.
How does that number, did you do the math? Looking at the capacity of the prayer hall, I believe the the last number we have show uh showed it based on number of prayer mats. Assuming that one point three eight people per car, what, how many, how does that translate the number of car parking spaces you have on site versus the capacity of the the theoretical capacity of the prayer hall based on the number of mats?
Yeah.
Did you do that math?
Sorry, I thought you were done. Um I believe there is an updated head count based on the revised architectural plan. Uh did not get a chance to grab that before the meeting, uh but we'll uh get that number and get back to you after the intermission.
And that's that's the intent of that comment with regard to people versus patrons is if you know, how many people, how many how many people the prayer hall holds based on the number of prayer mats? You know, they're one point eight or one point three eight people per car, does that mean, do you have enough parking based on that calculation?
Yeah, we could run that calculation. Um I if you if you look at the calculation based on the site plan, which shows three hundred uh forty, um you know, it's going to be over what the ordinance calculation is uh based on the revised plan. But we can, we could take a look at that and get you that number certainly. That was number four on page seven, number five. Uh regarding the scheduling of Friday midday services and the ability of the facility to turn over the the parking between services. Um so we did talk about that briefly at the beginning of the presentation, talked about the fact that the two services are going to be separated by an hour. Uh they're they're going to be fixed times twelve thirty to twelve fifty and one fifty to two ten, which will be consistent year round and allow for the um unloading of uh the unparking of vehicles from the parking spaces on and unloading of vehicles from the lifts. I think the fact that based on the distribution of traffic to the two services, um showing a lower utilization in the second service, not having to load additional vehicles into the lifts at that time, I think probably helps that unloading reloading process and reduces the time. Um you know, aside from that, I I know that extensive testimony was provided about the valet operation at the last meeting and would have to uh defer to the gentleman who spoke about the lifts and the the valets for a more granule- granular analysis of how their services are going to work. Comment number six about the tandem parking spaces, there are six tandem parking spaces in the underground garage. So three pairs, so there's only three spaces, if you want to think about it that way, that are the inside spaces at in the tandem spots. Uh and those will be occupied by the Imam and the mosque staff, so they're not going to be turning over.
So is it fair to say those spaces outside of when the lot is being used for valet operations? So I understand at that point, nobody's, no visitors are parking in there. Would those spaces be assigned to staff essentially?
When there's, when there's nothing happening at the site, I think people are just going to park with at the spot that's most convenient to where on the property they're going. Um we can designate those spaces for staff if if the board uh would recommend it and certainly have no objection to it. Uh you know, i- if you're talking about thirty or forty cars there for a typical daily prayer, um I I can't imagine why anyone would want to park in the tandem spaces.
And then, Mister Chairman, I believe the rest of the comments on my review um refer to issues with the site plan, things like turning radio vehicles, I believe the site engineer may be better equipped to handle them than Mister Stimmel. But of course, if you want to go through them, Bill, by all means.
Uh no, I was going to say largely the same thing, I'd have to defer to the site engineer regarding the turning exhibits, et cetera.
Do you have any questions of the Emo? An onsite hearse or something of that nature?
I don't have an answer to that. The answer is no.
Answers no. Mr. Sax, you have the people that have the lifts here?
I do.
Simple this. Twenty five cars in a stacking, how long to get them in and out?
I think the valet operator would be the person to answer that.
Just giving you a try first.
Like me to bring up the uh
I would like that, I would like to know how how long it's going to take them to get out and how long it's going to take them they pick up their car to leave.
And let me, let me just introduce for the record your name again, sir, for the record.
E I N G, last name Liu, L I E U.
Liu, I believe, was sworn in at the last meeting, Mister Sordillo, so.
Correct, you understand you're still under oath?
Hi. We've got twenty five cars in a stack. About ready to go out into Ernston Road, how long does it take for out of his car, get into church, take care of the car and then come back?
Sure. Um on average, typically in one of our operations, it's about a minute and a half, some run longer, some take two to three, four minutes. Um some are very quick, uh as I understand from the service, it's largely adults, adult males in this uh service. You know, working age, healthy. Somebody pulls up, they get out of the car, they uh check in and it's a very quick process.
How long to get the twenty five cars through the ch- Talking, you're talking, you're telling me it's going to take thirty minutes to clear that queue?
So with the way we plan our operations, we're going to have five teams, one uh one team working in each section of the lower level garage, so they can actually uh process five vehicles at a time.
That's with the full capacity of all your attendance?
Uh actually, in an ideal situation, they would have one operating the lift, one valet, what we call is a valet runner who drives the car to uh the final location. But they can actually operate with um five runners and approximately two to three um lift operators, because they're not actually operating the lifts all at the same time, it's working in a sequence.
Alright.
So ideally, seven underground and then some overflow up top for traffic. Um you know, traffic direction.
The less people you have, the longer it takes.
Not necessarily, no. No, I I would say on the underground.
Where's that breakpoint?
I would say seven underground and then, you know, two to three up top for uh traffic direction.
So you're telling me bare minimum is ten people, what if we're down to eight?
If we're down to eight, then it would be, you know, slightly slower, not by much, we would just direct some of the traffic, the staff up top for traffic direction. Because I'm get accounting for three up top, we can bring one down to cover.
Thank you.
So I would not have a significant impact.
Mister Chairman, if I may ask just one question and and I, this may be way off base and I I just, I'm just looking at it. Um you know, because I'm looking at the numbers in the tra- you know, uh set forth in the report, and I know it's been testified before, but we're saying that fifty seven of the twenty one spaces being provided underneath are going to be provided with lift mechanisms. But I just, now I'm thinking about it in my head, that seems an odd number. If if there's a, for the lift system, you have a car above and a car below, shouldn't that be an even number? Am I?
The fifty seven is the number of lifts. So there's going to be spaces underneath each of those lifts. The 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 layout was a hundred and nine parking spaces and looking at the the configuration of the garage, they were able to add fifty seven lifts to it.
Okay, so fifty, that fifty seven is just considered the the above number.
Correct, yes.
Need to make sure my notes are right because I was, got confused there and spun around a little.
Anybody else have any questions of traffic engineer?
Mister Chair?
Go ahead.
Uh Mister Stimmel, on the Brightview report on page six, the um comment on the bottom about the sixth edition I T parking generation manual.
Yes.
Uh which would seem to require nine hundred and five parking spaces for the proposed facility, can you explain to me again why you disagree with that?
It's a limited data size, I think it's only two data points. Uh but I looked at it quite some time ago, but it it's a very limited data sample. We don't know anything about the configuration of the buildings, um you know, were they all worship area? Were they similar to this site where they've got amenities? So it's a small data site and we don't know what the basis for those projections is. And the I T E itself tells you in the beginning of all these books, trip generation, parking generation and so on, that they require engineering judgment in the application of the data. And then further in situations like this, there's usually a note on the page uh to be cautious in the application of the data, given the fact that it's a small data size.
But the the data, your data point was the um firehouse observation on May seventeen, twenty twenty four, correct?
Correct.
So you you limit it to one data point too, right?
One data point which represents this congregation and this con- community a mile away from the proposed site.
And fair to say you rely on the I T E throughout your report?
I I generally rely on the I T E more than I did in this particular case. I noted in the report and instead of my earlier testimony that the the mosque is unusual and that there's not a lot of published data. and that there's not a lot of published data out there. The I T E did not have much data. The Department of Transportation did not have much. So we had to rely on data collected at the site for the most part.
Is a, a data point for one isolated day enough for you to rely to, to make your opinions?
Well, we counted the existing site in twenty-two and we counted the, uh, the, the existing site prior to approval. We counted the operation of this mosque at the fire hall in twenty twenty-four. You know, there certainly could be fluctuation from time to time. But typically, if you're, if you're counting site traffic for a use like this, for this type of traffic impact study, you know, you're not going out and counting it thirty times.
But it's not an apples to apples comparison as to what is being proposed for this site and the existing facility and the firehouse, correct?
It's an apples to apples comparison in that we think the main driver of traffic for the facility is going to be that Friday prayer, which was what the basis for the analysis was. All the other things associated with the project, the, the basketball courts and whatever else are, are nice features to have. But those are not going to be the main focus of the traffic generation.
You're assuming that the congregation is not going to grow to fit the proposed building. It's going to stay stagnant at what you could fit in the firehouse now or the existing facility, correct?
There could be growth in the congregation down the road, but there could also be additional mosques built. You know, the idea that if you double the size of the building, you're going to double the size of the congregation. Something hit me in the back of the head, uh, was, uh, you know, it, it just doesn't make sense. If you said that Saint Bernadette's right now is six thousand square feet and they, they increased the size of the assembly hall to twelve thousand square feet, I don't think anyone would say they're going to get twice as many people there next Sunday. You know, it's, it's a community, it grows from the, uh, number of, uh, followers of this particular religion within the area and, and people that might happen to be close by on a particular day.
Well, we, we follow logic, right? There'd be no reason to expand in existing use other than to increase its usage, right? I mean, that's logically, you're not going to expand Saint Bernadette if, uh, if there's no reason to do it. So, all right. No more questions, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do. Go ahead. This may be not be for Mr. Stimmel, could be for the parking agent. Or if Klaus is still in the room, I'm not sure if they're here or not.
They're here.
When the Friday services are over, are the parking units left in the up or down position? We have to.
Let, let me get him sworn in.
Last time, right?
He was, he was not here last time, so let's get him sworn.
Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? And would you please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Ryan Callahan, R Y A N, Callahan, C A L L A H A N.
And Mr. Callahan is a representative of the manufacturer, so.
Manufacturer, not the installer?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm the installer, maintainer.
So at the end of the Friday service, how are these units left? With the platform up, platform down?
So that all depends on the attendant that's going to be using it. So typically, when you would get there, say the lot is empty, all the sleds would be down. So you can load those up first and then pull under and park, you know, whether it's one deep or two deep depending on.
And I'd also like to make sure that Klaus is okay with the general public parking on the platforms on their own.
Yes. So I mean.
Anybody can just drive up and park on it?
We, 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 we provide a product, you know, with the municipality or, you know, whoever the. Decisions, what, what they do with the product.
Klaus has no recommendations for or against non-trained personnel to park on it?
So, again, that really falls back to typically, we provide with all of our units, instruction on how to operate the unit. Typically, if it's a attendant, uh, unit, which this would be an attendant unit, we do like to train personnel into how to use these.
Only attendant unit on Friday, so outside, someone's got to park on this out of tenant. So just want to make sure, are we, are we good, Klaus, are we good with parking on it?
Klaus is fine with that. You know, we, again, like I said, we, we're, we're just selling a product. What, what the owner of that product does afterwards, after we, we sell that product, that's, that's their decision. We just follow the guidelines of municipalities to install and to follow guidelines and regulations to make it meet the standards of wherever it's being installed.
And just to, just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, there may, I think we testified at one of the earlier hearings that there could be weddings occasionally or funeral occasionally, maybe another life cycle event. Certainly, if there's a demand to have the valet there at that particular time, we'll, we will do that if we expect that type of crowd. But generally, you know, uh, these are going to be in, in use on, on Fridays.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Down here. Oh, to Mr. Stimmel, actually, not to the general crowd.
Okay.
Earlier on, you had, I think you had testified that twenty-five cars could queue on the site, waiting to go into the parking garage.
Roughly, yes.
And I couldn't really see where you were estimating those twenty-five cars stacked. But will they interfere with the surface parking?
I'm sorry, where was the queuing? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, you had said that twenty-five cars could queue. And where they're queuing, are you going to interfere with access to surface parking or out of the surface parking?
Yeah, the, um, the, the twenty-five vehicles would start queuing at the southeast corner of the building. The queue would extend along the front of the building and then wrap around toward the western entrance and stop before you get to the western entrance. And that queuing assumes a length of twenty feet per vehicle, which is, is actually eighteen feet per vehicle with the two foot space in between. So your, your mileage may vary there. You may get larger vehicles, smaller vehicles, space closer or further apart, but roughly twenty-five.
So again, I don't have the benefit of looking at the plan where you're describing it. But what you're describing then does not block any of the surface parking, the area that you're saying?
It, it would have to block some of the surface parking. It wouldn't interfere with site operations. You'd still be able to get to some of the surface parking. You would still be able to get in and out of the garage. But the queue has to go somewhere and that seems to be the least intrusive place to put it.
And then just to Mr. Sax, you had mentioned, uh, providing revised calculations for the professionals and, and for the board members. Mrs. Stimmel had mentioned the July revised plan, I think was looking at. Those, those revisions are going to include plan sheets that have been revised for us to review?
Yeah, for some reason, I'm not sure. We believe we dropped off these plans, uh, for the, the July eleventh revised plans shortly after July eleventh. And I'm not sure why they never made it, but notwithstanding, we will, we will provide that. And if there are revisions that we've referred to, uh, we can add them on there, but.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, while we're talking about the queue area, it's something that is in my report. But would it be possible to provide an exhibit that shows the limits of the queue? Not only for cars entering, but also cars exiting? Just so we can understand, as, as cars are leaving the parking garage, where do they queue?
Yeah, we, we can provide that. I've just spoken to my engineer and that's, that's something we can provide. So we'll do that as a separate exhibit.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, just one question. And, and I don't want to belabor the issue on the queuing, but for the procedures for the early map, early service on a Friday, all the, the first, I don't know, first hundred vehicles or whatever, fifty vehicles will all be queued and all be parked subsurface?
The.
Procedure will be to get all the vehicles that first come in downstairs into parking or to the surface parking first?
The, the testimony that was presented at the last meeting, my understanding was that the cars that were, the cars that would, would fit on the lift. So if you take out the, um, you know, the oversized vehicles, handicap, things like that, th- those would still be in the, the surface area. The regular cars that were capable of going up on the lifts, those would go up on the lifts. Um, and, and they'd fill the lift spaces first. Now, the, um, I, I think if and when the site becomes operational, they're going to find out and have a better idea of whether or not they need to use all the lifts. And at that point, like I said, for the second service, it doesn't appear that they'd be needed and then they might change the procedure. But at least initially, that's the intention.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else of the, Mr. Stipple? John, you're going to bring your planner up?
Miss, yes, Mr. Chairman, I can bring the planner up. Maybe we should just give the court reporter a break for five minutes.
We can take a ten-minute break.
Okay.
Okay. We'll be back in ten minutes.
Thank you.
Nine o'clock.
Mr. Chairman.
How's our recorder doing? Is she fine? Thank you.
Much better.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think it was indicated to us that let's, you'd like Mr. Stimmel to go through the CME traffic concern, you know, the traffic issues raised in Mr. Cornell's report. We're prepared to do that. And then, once he's gone through that, we'll, we'll go to my planner.
I appreciate that.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Stim-
Where does that start?
Mr. Chairman, if you, I, I can highlight there's certain items, I think, that maybe we want to just discuss this evening. Some of them have already been talked about. Others, I think, we just want to maybe have you prepared to be addressed in the future. So, if you like, I can just point to the ones I think I'd like you to address.
That's fine.
First one is Section A, item number one. And not necessarily your traffic engineer, but indirectly comes back to him. It has to do with the building size. We had initially raised this question based on the architectural plans. As an example, the first floor of the building initially was 13,000 square feet. Now, it's 23,000 square feet. When you total all the individual components of that first floor, it still doesn't add up to the 23,000 square feet. Same thing with second floor. Originally, it was 21,000 square feet. Now, it's 13,000 square feet. When you total the components, it doesn't add up. So, I think this is maybe an exercise for your architect. Let him go and just make sure that the numbers of the different types of rooms match the square footage on his plans. That leads into the correct calculation of the number of parking places, which is kind of what we're having difficulty doing up to this point. Thank you. Just now, we can go to Section G in, in, in traffic. Item number two. Again, we talk about the inconsistencies between the engineering plans that we had before. I don't know if the current plans address this. It, it may. But we just want to make sure that the architectural plans are consistent with the engineering plans. The calculations for the parking are based on those accurate numbers. And that way, we can have it to make sure we have the correct number of spaces that you exceed and, and don't need a variance, or if you're deficient and do need a variance.
Understood.
Item number six has to do with the different religious activities taking place at the site. The initial report had certain numbers. The revised report has significantly higher numbers. Raising a question about why those numbers have increased so dramatically since the initial report.
We had asked the client to give a projection of what the operations would be at the site, not just the Friday services, but when are you having regular prayers? What, what do you do in terms of weddings, funerals, Sunday school, et cetera? And they had given us some data initially. And when it became more of an issue based on updated comments from the board professionals and, and the public, we asked for a little bit of further clarification on those points and said, you know, are these, are these numbers accurate? Do you feel safe with these numbers? Are they a little bit high, a little bit low? And, and based on the revisions, the trend of the numbers was generally a little bit higher to give a little bit more of a factor of safety. So, I don't think it's really a change in how the site is going to be operating. I think it's more of a conservative estimate of how the site is going to be operating.
I think the concern is, are you now trying to justify the larger size of the building and have your numbers match the, the square footage? That, that was the issue.
The, the, the biggest thing will still be the Friday prayer. So, I think, you know, the, none of the other events are going to approach that.
And also, same section, it talks about Ramadan, where previously, it was indicated that all activities were going to take place off-site. Now, based upon the revised report, it appears that there may be activities on-site. There may be a need for off-site parking at Sam Sel School. So, I, I, I think that needs to be clarified.
Mr. Cornell, we'll, we'll clarify that. And I'm going to provide that also in my letter of operations with respect to every, every, every particular room.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Mr. Chairman, just on that, Mr. Sax, is that seven days Ramadan? And, and does the prayer service start at 8:30 or 8:00 PM and end at 10:30?
I have to get clarified.
Okay. If you could, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, Mr. Sacks, when you do provide this, this summary, if you could clarify in there which events are going to, if, if that's still the case, which events will be held off-site? Because I was going through my notes, because I was getting a little confused too, when it came to, I think prior testimony was that weddings would be on-site, but receptions would not be. If we can just make sure that, since we're creating it anyways, that's very clear so that we can-
Yes.
Thank you.
Will do.
Item number seven. The attorney just mentioned the, the wedding services. Previously, you did not have a, a multi-purpose hall. I, I know you revised one of the prayer rooms. It's now a multi-purpose hall. Just want to make sure that now that that's been revised, you, you are not going to have wedding receptions since you originally said you were. Just want to confirm that. Item number nine. There was some discussion about potential traffic impacts from other developments in town. I, I did previously provide copies of the traffic reports for the Arsenal Trade Center, for Camelot at Main Street and Camelot at Ernst &amp; Road. As per the request of the board, I don't know that the traffic engineer has received those and reviewed those. So, maybe, Mr. Sacks, if you want to provide those to him, or if you, I, I had sent those to you after that May meeting. We just want to make sure that that is addressed, to make sure there's no impact from those developments.
Okay. I, I did briefly talk about the Arsenal development. That, that site is two miles away. With our intersection and our study area was not included in their analysis. So, we did not directly address that other than through the background growth rate.
I, I'm not sure where you got the information, if you did have that traffic report or if you didn't. I did provide it to Mr. Sacks.
I, I had the Arsenal report. I don't know how it came to my attention. I did not see the other report for the Camelot development, developments.
And, and the last item in my report, I think that we still have some trouble understanding is the operation of the valet system. I had mentioned exhibits for cars entering the site where they're going to queue. The same concern with cars exiting. When, when, when someone leaves a service, they request their car. Where does that car go for them to go through and pick up? Is there going to be a queue at the same location as the cars entering in reverse? Is there another area where cars are going to queue, where people are going to have to exit the facility and they walk out to the front of their car? So, just some, some further clarification as to how that's going to operate. Maybe an exhibit that shows the queue areas for both exiting and entering the site.
Yeah, I think we agree that we will provide some type of separate exhibit showing how the queuing will operate. And if we need any notes on those plans, we'll, we'll provide them as well.
Mr. Chairman, those are the items that have been revised since my initial reports. I think that's, should be sufficient for discussion this evening.
I have a question to Mr. Cornell.
Good evening, Mr. McDonough. If you would please raise your right hand. Do you test, excuse me. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I certainly do, yes.
And would you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. Hi there, everyone. My name is John McDonough. That's spelled M-C capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H. And I'm the project planner.
All right, and Mr. McDonough, if you can just briefly give the board the benefit of your education and professional background?
Sure, I am a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. That license is current. It's in good standing. I also have a certification at national level from AICP, which is current and in good standing. I have the good fortune of getting to testify nightly throughout New Jersey, north, south, east, west. We get to see the full cross-section of this beautiful diverse state of ours.
I have a recommendation to accept these credentials. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Mr. McDonough, with, with that said, I know you've had an opportunity. You're intimately familiar with this project. And if you could give the board the benefit of your planning analysis of this particular project.
Sure, sure thing. As we know, all land use planning starts with the land. So, we're going to take the board with a look at the land, which you've heard a lot of testimony about. I would like to enter an exhibit, Mr. Chairman, which are going to be a little packet of drone photographs that were taken last month in anticipation of testifying last month.
We're going to accept them and we're going to make them exhibit.
Nine, I believe?
Nine.
And A9, for the record, is going to be four sheets. And they're simply aerial drone photographs of the subject property for our interested parties here. They're just photographs of the land that I'm sure everybody all knows. And they were taken on September 18th.
Are you affirm or someone else's?
I did not. I don't touch the drone. It was taken by a, it was taken by a licensed drone operator in, in my office.
Thank you.
Under my direction.
Okay.
So, looks like everybody has A1. The first view is a view of the subject property. We try to hover it over the site, give you a sort of a look from a bird's eye, looking top-down at the property. The first thing that jumps out, of course, is we've got four tax lots here in Block 444.04, Lots 23, 24, 25, and 26. I think the first thing that jumps out at you is we've got a site here that is exceptionally large in the context of the neighborhood, in the context of your R7 zoning ordinance as well. The key point here, again, looking at land marrying up with land use, we've got a site that's got excellent spatial capacity to accommodate a development of the scale that's being put forth before you this evening. This site, as we know, is developed with multiple buildings and parking. And you can see that in the, in the photograph that was taken. In terms of the surrounding land use context, we've got residential on three sides. This is a residential zone. We've got some non-residential uses sprinkled in on the, on the opposite side as well. Next page, we take it more to the back of the property, looking at some of the homes in the back neighborhood, looking back towards the site, looking at the land use on the opposite side of the street as well. And then, spinning toward another angle, showing the subject property again, the larger mass in the middle, the surrounding land use context. And then, finally, again, just to bookend what I told you at the outset, is that we are dealing with an exceptionally large piece of property here, generally rectangular in shape or square in shape. Again, readily able to accommodate the development that's before the board. So, in terms of the plan before you, again, this is a redevelopment project. This is going to be to construct a three-story, 44,391-square-foot house of worship. That is going to be 40 feet above grade in terms of the overall building height. You've heard about the details of the plan, the, the religious use within and the multi-purpose components that are very common with this type of land use. In my practice, we see religious uses of all types. I've testified for mosques, for temples. uses of all types. I've testified for mosques, for temples, for synagogues, and for churches as well. Uh, it is very typical to see the, the worship use at the core, and then these other uses as well, which would promote fellowship and also a sense of community, um, and, and social service as well. So again, these are all knitted into, and integrated into the religious mission of this particular land use and this particular faith. Uh, you've heard about the subsurface parking. You've heard a lot of details about parking, the ground level parking as well, and the makeup of the rooms that are going to be within the building. I won't go into detail about all of them now because you have a good, solid record operationally, architecturally, and then site and, uh, expert wise in terms of how the overall site will flow, will function, and will operate. Uh, the unwavering testimony here on the applicant's side is that the site will flow, function, and operate safely and efficiently and comfortably for all of the persons who will come here, again, in the interest of serving that paramount public interest of religious freedom. We are here in the R-zone, our seven-zone district where this use is conditionally permitted. I think it's been well vetted that the two conditions that are required here are both met. Number one, to comply with all of your Schedule III bulk standards, top to bottom. They're listed in Mr. Khan's site plan as well. Complies, 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 over and over again. Uh, so to the extent that someone is concerned about the land use, the land use is permitted here. That in and of itself explicitly, explicitly means it serves the public welfare. Secondly, to the extent someone is concerned about the size of the building, the overall height of the building complies, the overall mass of the building complies, the building coverage complies, the lot coverage complies, the building positioning complies as well from all respects. Front setback complies, side setbacks comply on both sides, rear setback complies as well. Buffering, which is intended to provide for integration with the surrounding neighborhood, fully complies as well in terms of the width and the composition. Now, our land use process talks about an interactive process whereby the board makes comments, public makes comments, and applicant listens and responds. That's what's happened here. It's exactly what our Supreme Court of New Jersey says the process should be, a good interactive process where we take a good plan and making, make it better as we go. So use and scale of the development here are in line with your zoning ordinance. Um, we're looking for, again, uh, design standards, landscape lighting and buffering being substantially in compliance with your ordinance as well. Um, through your engineer's report, I think your planner report referenced the engineer report for some design-related relief, and I'll, I'll pop through that as I, I conclude my testimony. But in terms of the letter of the ordinance as we now stand now, the only relief that the applicant is seeking is relative to parking, to the extent that the board is considering the aggregate of all uses, if that's the strict interpretation of the ordinance. Uh, you have good, solid testimony, uh, through the witness before me and the witnesses before me, that based on the traditional way of calculating parking for a house of worship, which is based on the peak demand, um, we're looking at actual compliance here in terms of parking of a hundred and sixty-six spaces being provided, where a hundred and fifty-one would be required if we take all the mats, count them as chairs, and divided that by three, which is the requirement of your ordinance. So again, one sixty-six provided, one fifty-one required based on the number of mats, uh, for both the men and for the women, um, operating at one, at one time. As you've heard, the religious practice, the ritual, um, the worship service is non-coincident with all of the other, um, activities that would take place on this facility. And those extra, I'll say curricular activities or non-worship activities do not approach or exceed the one hundred and fifty-one space demand, uh, that would be triggered by the ordinance for the religious use at peak. So again, we've got good, solid testimony on the record that forms a predicate that on balancing the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriments with respect to parking. Now, when we apply the balancing test, we always start with the purposes of the municipal land use law, and we see if they're advanced here. Uh, the very first purpose in the land use law and the reason why this board is here and why your town has the power to create zone districts and zone within its borders, um, is found in Purpose A, NJSA forty, colon, fifty-five, D dash two. Purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare. And that is advanced here by an applicant delivering a permitted use that fully conforms to the conditional use requirements that would be applied to this use. Not only we are we dealing with a permitted use, but we're dealing with an extra special land use as well in terms of what we would call an inherently beneficial land use or a top-tier land use reserved for a very narrow band of uses in our land use law. I always think of them as the mind, body, and spirit uses. Um, mind, we're talking about educational or academic uses are reserved as inherently beneficial. Body, we're looking at health-oriented uses like a hospital. And then finally, of course, in terms of spirit or religious uses, whether we're talking about a church, a synagogue, a temple, or mosque, it's clear under the land use law that all religious practice gets equal treatment. Um, and so again, this is going to fulfill the religious mission of this particular faith at this particular location where the faith is already located. Every religion deserves a decent place to worship. Again, this building, as you've heard through the testimony, will, uh, meet the needs of this particular faith, uh, to serve its religious mission and provide itself with a decent place to worship. That all goes towards Purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare. We know in that regard, freedom of religion is a fundamental founding principle of this country. And again, that counts in my view, um, as paramount public interest in terms of the advancement of Purpose A. Other purposes advanced here under NJSA forty, colon, fifty-five, D dash two would be Purpose C, the planning goal to provide for adequate light, air, and open space. Again, in terms of the vertical mass of the building complies, horizontal mass of the building complies, positioning of the building complies. This application is spot on in terms of advancing the planning goal for adequate light, air, and open space. Next, Purpose G under the land use law, to provide for a variety of uses according to the needs of all New Jersey citizens. We know here in New Jersey that there are shifting demographics. It's happening in your community as well. And again, this will fulfill, uh, the mission of, of, of this organization and a practice that's already there. Purpose M, the planning goal for efficient use of land, taking an assemblage of lots, pulling them together to develop in a cohesive, unified fashion, uh, again, goes towards that planning goal for the efficient use of land, taking multiple lots that create a larger lot, um, and developing them as a single whole. Lastly, we look at the planning goal, Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. The centerpiece of this development is going to be a very beautiful building. Um, and you have the architecturals to support that as well. Um, it is going to take the multiplicity of uses on the property, co-join them together in a single focal point, single, a beautiful building. Um, again, we have landscape architecture to complement the architecture, and that will help build or blend the built environment into the surrounding natural environment as well. So again, in terms of the positive criteria for the board to consider here, we have extreme weight on the positive side in the advancement of Purpose A, Purpose C, G, M, and I. Counterbalancing that, obviously, we always have to consider the negative criteria and whether relief can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public, without any substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of your zone plan and ordinance. In terms of substantial detriment to the public, I think obviously the key concern here is the queuing, is the parking, is the traffic. You have uncontroverted expert opinion on the record, again, that this site will flow, will function and operate safely and efficiently, that the parking supply is adequate to meet the actual demand, again, using the ordinance and the one fifty-one ratio. If that worship hall were occupied at peak or the two worship components were occupied at peak at the same time, one sixty-six where one fifty-one would be the peak demand. You also have good analytic real-world calculations in terms of that one point three eight ratio, uh, which would also be adequate in terms of providing for the one hundred and sixty-six spaces that the applicant is providing here. With respect to the zone plan and ordinance, again, the degree of departure from the zone scheme is not substantial here, given the parking ratios that I just gave you. The core question, of course, before the board is not the use, not the size of the building, but rather the, the level of activity and the, the parking supply and whether it is adequate to meet the actual demand. Again, based on those ratios, based on the consistent and unwavering testimony of the witnesses before me, the parking supply is adequate to meet the demand. Lastly, we look at impairment to your zone plan and ordinance. I looked at your two thousand twenty-three master plan by Susan, master plan reexamination by Susan Gruel, that two thousand thirteen master plan by John Lee Engavala. Again, recognizing the diversity of your community, the changing of demographics, and the need to plan for, uh, future populations. So I think this is on point with that as well. All said, I believe on balancing, this is clearly reconcilable under the flexible C balancing test whereby the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriments. It's not the applicant's burden to prove that it has a hardship here. That would be the C one standard. We're not relying upon that. That is the older standard in the land use law. That is the only standard I can use if I go outside of New Jersey. But, uh, New Jersey is distinct in that we do allow for this reasonable balancing here as well. And again, I think the clear weight is, if the heavy weight is on the positive side with minimal weight, if any, on the negative side. Um, lastly, we have some design exceptions here that are listed in your engineer's report. We're now looking at a lower standard of reasonableness and appropriateness and a sense of impracticability whereby, um, strict or literal enforcement of your ordinance would serve no practical planning purpose. Uh, based on the testimony and, and what you've seen on the plans, I believe the relief is reasonable. We're looking at parking in the front yard. We have parking in the front yard now. We think it's better to have the open air activity of parking closer to the street and the building mass in the back. Buildings can become buffers, just like landscaping can as well. And we think that building mass helps separate the residential uses behind from the active land use, which is really that, that open air parking lot in the front. Uh, no sidewalks against the building, no islands in the parking lot, no designated loading space, and no deceleration lane. All fall within the confines, I think, of the testimony of the engineer, um, and the witnesses before me, that the site will meet acceptable site planning standards, notwithstanding those design exceptions that the applicant is seeking. With that, again, this, the board does have an abundance of evidence before it that you can certainly consider. But from a planning standpoint, I'm satisfied that this applicant has met its burden under the law. I would also just remind the board that the R-seven zone is not only for single-family uses, but it does allow for institutional uses here as well. From a planning standpoint, we're not supposed to say, well, that, that would never happen. We have to look at what the zone plan contemplates as what's okay. So you could have a building here of the exact same size that would meet all the light and air controls and be a school where everyone comes at the exact same time and every room in that building gets filled. So again, activity, um, traffic are contemplated here within this zone. You could also have community shelters, um, victims of domestic violence. You could have community residences, uh, vic, uh, for persons that are developmentally disabled. Again, it's not just a single-family zone, but there are other uses that could go here as well. So in terms of consideration of the degree of departure from the zone plan, I think this plan is, is well thought out. It is consistent with good planning principles and community development and orderly growth. Most importantly, the statutory criteria for the very minimal relief that the applicant is seeking here, it's a single variance and some design exceptions. I believe the applicant has met its burden here and approval is warranted.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. Mr. Chairman, with that said, Mr. McDonough is certainly available for any questioning by the board members.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. McDonough? Go ahead.
So, John, just one question. You quoted the one per three seat, um, number for the parking ordinance. How do you reconcile that requirement with Mr. Stimmel's earlier testimony that the existing operation is one point three eight people per vehicle as opposed to three people per vehicle as the ordinance required? How do you justify those two from a planning perspective?
Again, I'll fall back on the testimony of Mr. Stimmel and how he dealt with the, with the ratio requirement there. That, again, the supply will meet the actual demand.
That was my only question, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Fisher, I, I think part of the issue we're having tonight is the fact that you don't have the benefit, even though we dropped it off, of the July plan, July eleven, twenty twenty-four plan prepared by, uh, AWZ, where we're showing, uh, the occupancy of three forty for the gents', uh, prayer hall, which is three hundred and forty prayer mats, and I believe a hundred and fourteen for the ladies. And based upon that, uh, Mr. McDonough, if you divide that by three, that's where we come up with the one fifty-one. Now, the other uses, and I'll ask you this question, Mr. McDonough, we've already stipulated that the other uses, uh, will not operate at the same time. That's where we, if you add all of the other uses in terms of the parking requirement, we come up with the, with the hundred and ninety-six. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. We assume there's not, not coincident peaks, that they're all happening at the same time.
Well, and my question was more to the ordinance says one per, three people per vehicle, and you have testimony from your traffic engineer saying that actual experience is only one point three eight people per vehicle. Is the, in your professional opinion, is the ordinance correct?
I, I will say that the ordinance standard is typical of what I see for a house of worship, yes.
And typical for a house of worship where the, the number of people is based on?
Seats.
Seats versus prayer mats. That's, my concern is you have an ordinance that says one thing and your testimony from your traffic engineer says something complete, something different. How, which is right?
Obviously, the mat would take up more space because people are lying prostate, um, than a seat. So there's, it's actually less demand. There's a lesser demand than that one point, one per three, in my view.
But wouldn't a facility like this, say, compared to a, a church where there's pews or something like that, where there's more children present, wouldn't that push up the uh, occupancy per vehicle? Is, yes, ultimately, is one, is your, is it your opinion that one vehicle per three prayer mats is an appropriate ordinance for this, this use?
Yes.
Those are my questions, Mr. Chairman.
You first and then.
Okay. Uh, Mr. McDonough, what type of variance? How many additional parking spots are you seeking a variance for? Is your client seeking a variance for?
The applicant is providing a hundred and sixty-six spaces, and I just heard testimony that a hundred and ninety-six would be required, so a thirty-space deficiency.
You don't know how that hundred ninety-six requirement was calculated, do you?
It's, it's taking the aggregate of the uses, again, for the place of worship. I just gave you the one fifty-one based on the number of mats. Then for the basketball court, gymnasian, gymnasium at a ratio of four point five per one thousand. And we have a seven thousand, seven hundred and three square foot gym. That comes out to thirty-five spaces. You have the office uses at four per one thousand and six hundred and thirty-two square feet. That's another three spaces. And then the classrooms on Saturday and Sunday school are seven spaces. If you add those four numbers up, one fifty-one plus thirty-five plus three plus seven, that gets. If you add those four numbers up, 151 plus 35 plus 3 plus 7, that gets to the 196.
Okay, and that's based off that AWZ engineering report?
That is correct, yes.
Said earlier that you're calculating number of spaces based on the factor of three persons per car, based on 454?
That's correct.
Find it appropriate to only consider that we're only going to have that one day a week? Think you should be calculating your parking spaces based on capacity of the halls?
Typically, when we plan, we plan for.
You said it was, you said multiple times in your testimony before that demographics are changing, and you're expecting growth in the area. Mr. Stimmel is only calculating based on what's fitting to the firehouse today. All right, so is it safe to assume that as demographics shift, you could fill the 454 spaces during prayer on any given day of the week?
We know that this land use has its religious practice on on Fridays. That's consistent for this land use. And at peak demand on Fridays, we're looking at 454 mats, which would come out to that 151 space requirement. If in the event there is additional growth here, they would have to be planning for that as as they move forward. It's not atypical for some religions.
But you don't plan for that in the building of construction? You don't plan for that now?
Could be an operational consideration. It's typical for religious practice to maybe go to a split service to to changing. Again, those are operational things that would have to be considered.
But don't you take operational considerations into planning? Have you seen or reviewed in your in your planning operation, the days of the week we're going to be operating?
Yes, yes, this is typical for what I have seen for this land use. They have planned for 454 mats now to serve to serve their population, their members now. If there is future growth, they would have to be planning for that down the road.
But my my point is, we're only planning for those spaces on Friday, not the rest of the week.
Right, right. And those, the testimony on the record is those ancillary uses are not going to exceed that 151 space demand.
But we're not operating the park lot with 150, with 161 spaces other than Friday. We're only operating that on Friday.
Sir Legra, I'm just curious, not to interrupt you, but I believe there's been testimony that the balance of the week has much less attendance, even for the daily prayers.
But in his testimony, he said demographics are changing and we're expecting growth.
Well, no, he, no, demographics are changing.
That was his testimony.
Well, all right, you you can ask him that question again. I mean, certainly.
It wasn't a question. It was a statement that he made during his testimony.
Well.
So are we projecting growth? Or are we going to base everything on what we have today for a congregation as a planner?
Both.
Where's the upside? Where's the, where's the other planning for the future?
This is planned for the future. We're looking at low demand during the non-worship service, and there's there's adequate supply.
Soon as, as soon as you say that you're going to expand, let's say the ancillary stuff stays the same, Friday gets busier. Where's that planned into now?
As with, as with any religious practice, that would have to be planned for. Special services, special holidays, all of that gets planned for as part of any religious practice.
But we're not even talking about special events. We're talking about the the general five day, five times a day prayer. I'm not sure what it's called, but Monday through, I don't know if it's on weekends. I've been waiting for the schedule. You still haven't promised it. Are we going to get it next, hopefully next time?
Oh, yeah.
Can we get it before?
I'm I'm sorry?
As a condition of the next hearing, can we have this before the next hearing?
Yes, I've indicated I'll provide that.
But you did the last three times. Can we get a condition before the next hearing? Otherwise, we postpone the hearing if we don't have the information provided to us.
Oh, oh, I, that's why I was confused when you were saying condition. Sorry.
I don't know how we can review testimony and and try to weigh pros and cons and everybody in the room gets a chance to review things if you don't have the items to review.
And Mr. Legra, I have indicated at the outset of the meeting that I would provide that in time for the next meeting.
With all due respect, you said that the last time, the time before, and the very first time as well. And we can go back to the minutes that you promised this, and you have never.
I'm not, I'm not going to get into an argument with you.
You don't have to.
And and I wouldn't do that. But it was important that we provide the traffic testimony for clarification this evening, which we provided. Now that we have the traffic testimony and.
How could you review the traffic testimony if you don't know when you're doing your prayer services?
We've already indicated the hours of the prayer service. I believe we stated at the outset that it will be from 12:10 to a certain time.
But there's more than this Friday. We have to review the entire package as the planner indicated.
Well, I think we also provided that testimony back in April at the outset of the meeting.
You had said that you were only, you were having prayer services from 6:00 AM until 8:00 PM, which we already have discovered in previous testimony from you, that that is not the case because it's based on different times of the year.
We have, right, we understand that sunrise doesn't occur at the same day, and sunset doesn't occur at the same day. And yes, we will provide that information to you, all right? And you will have that in advance of the next meeting. However, as to the Friday prayer services, we know what, those are going to be specific set times. There's no question about that.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I I express the same sentiment as Mr. Legra, and I'm not looking to place blame on anyone. The number, the parking requirement seems to change every time we come back here, and it's very frustrating. Additional hours of operation seem to change. I'm not really sure about the the level of service for the whole month of Ramadan, if that's going to be a nightly event of 300 to 500 people. At, so there's a lot of moving parts here. And I think we can't proceed forward with our questions to Mr. McDonough until we get this basic information. So I would like to get this information and table this so we can have an intelligent discussion as to what the magnitude of this variance is really, what we're really dealing with.
Any other questions of the planner? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. McDonough, has the applicant advised you of the number of current members or congregants? Is that, isn't that critical to know from a planning perspective if the occupancy of the building is sufficient to enable the congregation to engage in the free practice of religion?
You have testimony on the record from an operator sworn under oath that the capacity of this building is adequate to serve its current membership and a reasonable future projected growth.
So I'm glad you said that because the current testimony in the record is that the membership is approximately 300 to 330 individuals. So right now, the testimony that you gave and the testimony in the record are, is there, there is, I'll assume to say seating, but occupancy for ritual service in the amount of 454. You've also testified at length in your opening soliloquy about the size of this property and how much space there is. So from a planning perspective, why wouldn't it be appropriate, since there is sufficient amount of space, for the applicant to provide parking for either the number of congregants that they currently have or anticipate having, or to reduce the occupancy amount to meet or to provide for what the congregation is?
Because the applicant doesn't need more parking.
Well, no, they do, right? The law says they do. I mean, and that's why they're seeking relief. They're seeking a variance. They're here for variance, and that's fine. People often seek relief. Nothing wrong with that. But here, you've testified that there's, that this is a a large property, abnormally large, for the the area it's located in. And given that it's large for the area it's in, and given that right now ritual occupancy is is at 454, and somebody can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that congregation's size is between 300 and 330. I I'm confused as to why, from a planning perspective, we need to grant relief for parking when it appears that either occupancy, occupancy, excuse me, could be decreased, or since, as you pointed out, this is a very large piece of property, additional parking could be put in by redesigning or scaling down the building. So that's what I'm asking you.
I'll repeat my answer. It doesn't change because the applicant does not need more parking. The ordinance may say it does, but you have the actual testimony here with respect to supply. The applicant doesn't need more parking. Parking is adequate to serve the occupancy that.
And why, why are you asking for a variance?
Well, let me respond to that, Mr. Chairman. We we technically do not need a variance for the ritual activity. Based upon the, based upon the occupancy with the prayer mats, we need 151 parking spaces when the ritual activity is occurring. We have 166. We we need a technical variance because you're adding in all the other uses.
But we're not adding it in.
No, you're not, but your ordinance does, which brings it up to 196. I also want to, and I know.
So you're saying our ordinance is out of line?
No, I didn't say your ordinance is out of line. I'm just saying that it's a technical variance. Based upon the size of the building, it triggers 196 parking spaces.
If the building was smaller, the trigger would go away?
Well, no, if, no, it wouldn't because we would still have these other uses. But in terms of the actual ritual activity, which occurs on Friday around noon time to 2 o'clock, we only need 151 parking spaces at full occupancy of this building. That would be if all 454 spaces in that prayer hall were utilized. Now, Mr. McDonough, to follow up on that, you heard the testimony from Mr. Stimmel, and he did actual traffic counts at the Madison Park Fire Hall, which showed the peak parking demand at that site as 121 vehicles.
Yes.
And that's substantially less than the 166 parking spaces that we provide. So to follow up on the question of Mr. Mueller and other various board members, if you, yes, we would love to see growth, but we know consistently, consistently, that there are 121 vehicles parked at the Madison Park Fire Hall. That that was done in April of 2024. That was done on a Friday. Do we expect the congregation to grow? Maybe, but maybe not. We have 121 vehicles that are generally there on every Friday. And Mr. McDonough, is that consistent with your analysis here?
Yes, it is. And just to bring it back to the chair, I think we all know a variance should not be denied because it's a variance. That's the reason why we're here. That's why you've had three or four hearings now, extensive hearings on this. It comes down to the testimony before you, the credibility, the reliability of the witnesses, and the evidence that the supply will meet the actual demand. It's based on the testimony. That's why we do this.
So going back to actually, since you're incorporating the 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 traffic testimony, peak on, peak, at the time the study is done, peak vehicles on the Friday earlier service were what, 120, 121 with a vehicle occupancy of about 1.38. That's certainly not 454.
Prayer mats.
Prayer mats or occupants or congregants or worshippers. So again, from a planning perspective, and in order to meet this congregation's ability, because, right, it is an inherently beneficial use, and that's that's certainly not disputed. But hearing the factual testimony and of congregation's size and of vehicles and congregants' attendance, I I just, I'm having a hard time understanding where, from a planning perspective, the 454 occupancy is necessary when you're seeking variance relief, where if that was reduced, variance relief may not be needed. And and this doesn't appear from the testimony that's been put on by the applicant's own witnesses that demand requires that there be 450, that there be space for 454 congregants. So that that's what I think myself, and I'm sure the members of the board may be having difficulty with.
Understand.
And so why, from a planning perspective, understanding that we have a need to to, that certainly it's an inherently beneficial use. But, Mr. McDonough, wouldn't this congregation and this applicant's needs be met if the occupancy was lower?
No.
Why?
This applicant has said this is the space it needs to accommodate its membership.
But that's telling me, that's just saying I disagree with you because I don't like what you say. Factually, if they're telling us that their occupancy is X, and they're seeking occupancy of Y, and in order to do Y, they need variance relief, why should that variance relief be granted in this situation where, based on their own test, their own testimony, their own experts' testimony, their own fact witness testimony? It doesn't, the, it, that that level of of intensity of use isn't isn't supported.
You have testimony of an operator, a religious operator, that says we need this number to fulfill our religious mission.
That's not what he said. I asked how many people, how many congregants, they said. They have at most between, I believe, 3 or 330. Somebody can certainly correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that's the number.
The applicant has said that by the plan it has put before you to accommodate 454 persons here.
Well, no, their fact testimony was, your own client's own fact testimony was 3 to 330.
The plan shows 454.
Well, that's what my point is. Their fact testimony is one number. The plan shows another. What's the planning justification for granting relief when the, when the applicant's own testimony, both factual testimony from the applicant, the the project or applicant witness, as well as that from their experts that they've put forward, doesn't support the need for space for 500, I'm sorry, 454 congregants during a single worship service? That that's my question.
Again, it was a question asked of me to plan for for future growth to a reasonable degree. That's certainly built into that 454 mats there.
All right, so if current, if current growth is, if current, if current congregation size is between 300 and 330, and they're they're planning for 454, I'll say 450. I'm a lawyer. I'm not a, certainly if I was good at math, I'd be an accountant or an engineer or a doctor. Might have a lot less stress probably, too. The, that's almost 150 congregant increase, which, you know, by my poor math, is somewhere between 50%, 45% and 50% increase. So what, what's the data that shows that that planning for growth in the area of 40 to 50% is is the appropriate, the appropriate metric to use? What justifies that?
I'll fall back on the on the record. It's not atypical, in my view, to see a 5% growth increase over the course of five years. We've seen it planned in religious practice for this particular land use. I get you to 25%, and I believe the number you just gave me is about a 25% increase.
It might be like 50, 50, or 45 or 50, but that that's near here and there. Given that you've said this is such a significant, like, it is a large piece of property. Looking at 9A, you know, driven by the property, but looking at the aerial views, it it shows it even more. You know, could this project be redesigned or reconfigured to provide for the appropriate amount of parking for the appropriate number of, for the identified number of congregants by the applicant?
No.
Why not?
I just told you.
No, I, you didn't. I don't know. I, I, why can't it be reconfigured?
Mr. Pullman, I think you know the answer. Sure, anything can happen, all right? And if that's what, if that's what you're looking to obtain from the applicant, then I've answered that. But but certainly, I think what Mr. McDonough has indicated is that, yes, we anticipate that there'll be some growth. We hope that there's some growth. If there's 330 members now, we know that the maximum occupancy is 454. I'm I'm not a mathematician either, but 450 minus 330 is 120, and you divide that into 330, it's about a third. It's about a 33% increase. You know, again, I understand your point. But technically, we don't need a variance based if we just really look, and I think you have to, look at the ritual activity, which really is the largest activity here. And based upon that, we have enough parking. We don't need a variance. But when you take in all the other, all the other.
Yeah, but it, but the, and this applicant chose to provide. Yeah, but, but the, and this applicant chose to provide, to present an application that provides not just for sanctuary or ritual space, but for community center space, which, as we've discussed before, is certainly within their right and certainly is encompassed within religious uses.
It's certainly a laudable goal.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, you know, if I go down the street past, past the church, I know there's gymnasium there. If I go past the synagogue.
J C C, C Y O, all, no question. But the, but it's the intensity of the use based on the testified occupancy and congregation that I, I think is a, is a real question that this board deserves answers to.
Mr. McDonough, let's assume it's correct and you need a variance for thirty parking spaces. I'm not entirely convinced that that's the case. It's your testimony that that's not going to create a substantial burden i- in the area, having thirty cars looking for parking on Ernston Road?
That is my emphatic testimony, yes.
How many times have you been on Ernston Road?
Based on, based on the underlying record that the supply will meet the actual demand.
Where's, what's the underlying data for that, sir?
I have a sworn expert under oath here who has, that's the predicate for my testimony.
One data point on one day on a firehouse where there's no testimony on the square footage, that's your whole case?
I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I am relying upon the testimony of the witnesses that have gone before me.
Let's assume the law is correct on this, and you have thirty cars that don't have a place to park. Where are they going to park?
I don't know. I'm not the traffic expert.
Okay. But you say that's good planning?
I can't see who's asking me the question.
I asked the question. Your testimony that thirty cars, you don't know where they're going, you consider that good planning?
I'm not planning for that happening.
What happens when it does? You're not living here.
I, I can't hear, I can't hear you, Mr. Chairman.
I said, what happens when it does? You don't live here. That's what I said.
I don't know how to answer that question. I don't know.
Have you been to Ernston Road? Have you seen, have you, have you physically been to the property?
Yes, and I have, have not done an analysis of the parking testimony fails.
I didn't ask you that. Have you noticed the traffic on Ernston Road? That's all I want to know.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's difficult to hear you with.
I, I, I don't hear the public. I hear me, and my hearing aids are okay, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. What was the question?
Have you been there at peak hours?
I've been there during all, all times, yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
More comment than question, but I think what I'm missing is, there's only a hundred and nine physical parking spots when the parking lift system's not in operation. It's only in operation for two hours on Friday, plus other parties and celebrations that may occur that you'll bring people in. We're only assuming for ritual purposes, it's only operating two hours on Friday, two or three hours ballpark for it. Get the pronunciation, Juma? Thank you. But what about the rest of the ritual services? There's only a hundred and nine spots. So now, while I know you're not the traffic expert, wouldn't you plan for all ritual services to meet the capacity of the rooms? For this, for the ritual services?
Mr. Allegri?
Yes.
Or member Allegri? The second time you asked me that, so I know, I think this applicant certainly owes you that answer for sure. What happens during the non-peak religious use? We know that prayer services are multiple times during the day. And to the extent that the applicant hasn't given you those numbers of what the capacity is, as I understand it, it's substantially less than those ninety surface spaces that you're.
What I'm asking, would you plan to meet capacity of your rooms? As a planner, would you plan to meet capacity of those rooms? Would you plan for other ritual services to have four hundred and fifty-four people?
Would I plan for the non-Friday peak service to have four hundred and fifty mats occupied? No, I would not. That's atypical of this religion. That is atypical.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Go ahead. Mr. McDonough, and I don't want you, I don't want you to think that I'm being adversarial here because we have a major problem on Ernston Road. I wish we all could figure, everyone in this room could figure out a way to solve this problem. The county's not helping us, but it really is almost, that area is almost a, a public nuisance at night. It's really bad, and that's no one's fault. It's just the way it is. But when you said that the benefits outweigh the detriment, you know, for the thirty, the variance for thirty parking spots, did you analyze what the detriments would be on the area of thirty cars not being able to park and what detriment, if any, that would cause in that area? Did you do that analysis to say that detriment, that benefits outweigh that detriment?
I'm not giving my testimony in a vacuum. There's been a number of witnesses that are before me. You have a signed and sealed traffic report. As far as I understand it, you've had on the, on the board side a check of that data and how that methodology was done, and it has not been questioned. I'm sure if I'm not saying the right thing, I'll be, I'll be corrected, but there are checkpoints here, and I'm not, I'm not giving testimony in a vacuum, but I am certainly relying on at least three witnesses before me who've said traffic, parking, and circulation will be okay.
And I, I understand that that's your answer, that you're not going to need the thirty spots in essence, right? Because we have the data point saying it's only going to be a hundred and twenty-one that we need, right? Because we know what happened at the firehouse, right?
In accordance with acceptable traffic engineering principles.
The question is, what happens if we do need it? Because the law says you, we're gonna need it. That's what the ordinance says. So the law presumes that you're going to need those spots. And if you need the thirty spots, did you analyze what the detriment would be of not having those thirty spots? Because you've testified in, you know, a big conclusory manner that the benefits outweigh the detriments with respect to parking. So did you analyze what the detriment would be of not having, of needing the thirty spots and not having them?
I did not.
Okay.
Mr. Mueller, I can perhaps respond as well because I'll go back to April. One of the, one of the conditions we agreed to is that there would be no parking in the residential neighborhood. So let's say thirty cars show up in excess of the hundred and sixty-six that are there. We already know that we are employing the Sayerville Borough Police Department to direct traffic. They'll be there at twelve-ten. They're going to close the parking lot. What's going to happen in reality is those individuals are not going to go to that service. They'll probably go to the second service, which we also know is less well attended. I didn't need applause for that, all right? But, all right, but, but anyway, all right? But, but.
Yo, please, 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 both sides, listen. Yo! We need some decorum here. Both sides, I don't want to hear any more clapping. Yo! I've got the floor. Please continue, Mr. Sax.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish.
We're not, Mr. Sax, before, I would, I would appreciate both sides not clapping. We have to keep on, on, on schedule, and we don't need any interruptions. We need to get a solid report from our court, court synographer, so please. Thank you.
Anyway, the, the bottom line, and I think Mr. McDonough has testified to this, and I'll ask him again, do we need a variance for the use of the ritual hall?
No.
We don't. Correct. We have a hundred and sixty-six parking spaces based upon, and by the way, I apologize that you don't have the revised plans of July eleventh, 2024, because if you had them in front of you, that would answer a lot of questions. We did deliver them to the town. For some reason, you don't have them. That's fine, and we'll make sure that you get them tomorrow, all right? So that you'll have, you'll have them in front of you, and you can make an educated decision when there's ultimately, this application does get adjudicated. But the bottom line is that there are safeguards in place. We're not going to have vehicles trying to navigate a parking lot when it's full. When it's full, you're not going to that service, all right? And.
So your testimony is that everybody that comes to that service that can't get in is going home?
I would say so, Mr. Chairman, all right? There's another.
What happens when they overflow into the residential neighborhoods?
We will agree to put signage up, all right? We will, we will regulate it. We don't want to be a bad neighbor. We want to be a good neighbor. Now, again, of course, I appreciate, excuse me.
Again, please.
Mr. Chairman, I have to tell you, I, I just want to make a comment. I mean, it, maybe it's just endemic of society today, but I, I would appreciate some civility. This is a quasi-judicial hearing in front of this board, all right? And we need to establish a record. Now, the people who are making comments, they can make whatever comments they'd like, but it's affecting the ability of the court reporter to get this down accurately.
I understand, and I've, I've tried on both sides.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
And I've asked you again, please.
All right. I, I don't have anything else to say. I think I've covered what I needed to say, Mr. Mueller.
Mr. Fischinger, what's the effective impact of having police direct traffic? Does that create issues in and of itself, detriment?
It can. I mean, obviously, every location is specific, and I don't know that it was actually covered in Mr. Stimel's testimony. One of my questions was the effect putting a police officer out there would have on Ernston Road. Obviously, that would allow vehicles to enter and leave the site easier, but whether or not that would cause backups on Ernston Road to increase is still an outstanding issue. So yes, that, that, like everything else, the, it's a trade-off. It could back up Ernston Road further.
Thank you. Anybody else? Barry, your light on? Mr. Mr. Chair, I, just going back to my comments before, I would just ask that Mr. Sax, bring Mr. McDonough back once we have the full plans and we know what the, the full parking requirements are and if there's any disputes regarding that. Mr. Sax, you have a problem with that?
I have no objection to that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any plan? Questions to the planner? Go ahead.
Actually, I'm still, and I know we've started to go over this, I'm still confused, John, on which, in your professional opinion, what is the, the correct number of, to convert number of people or congregants, parishioners, whatever, to number of park, needed parking spaces? Because we have test, the ordinance says that's three pe, persons per vehicle. Your testimony of your own traffic engineer says it's one point three eight, which is correct? Because if you're assuming the ordinance number is correct, you have enough parking, but if you assume the testimony of your own traffic engineer of actual, real-world conditions of this congregation, then you don't have enough parking for four hundred and fifty-four people. How do you reconcile those two? Which is the correct standard?
I would have to go back and listen to Bill's testimony about that one point three eight and the context of what it was used within. Again, the one per three is what I typically see as a planning standard.
Well, I, it sounds like you're coming back, so there will be time to confer with Mr. Stimel, I'm sure.
Sounds like there's a few things we'll reconcile.
Anybody else have anything? Now, before I open to the public, the only questions we're going to take tonight from the public from either side are traffic and planning, nothing else. And remind you that it's quarter after ten. At eleven o'clock, we end. Motion open to the public? Make a motion to open to the public?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You had your hand up first. Go to the mic, state, state your name and where you live. Spell your name, too, for the court.
Good evening. My name's Osman, spelled O-S-M-A-N. Last name's Lammon, Z like zebra, A-M-A-N. Four eighteen Main Street, Sayerville, New Jersey. This is a question for the applicant. If Juma prayer does go over occupancy?
I don't, I don't know if the traffic engineer can answer that or the planner. I mean, that's the only testimony we provided this evening. And I, I could get back to, I could get back to him on that issue, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't know the answer to it.
Remember, we're talking about traffic and planning.
I'm, I brought it up because it was part of the traffic. I have a question for the board. When you guys are discussing how many people are going to be at a prayer or a service, reference back and forth between peak, which is considered Juma, on peak, which is considered right now, following the testimony. How does the board want to segregate that so that the rest of us citizens understand why you're asking in such close proximity to each other? Because a board member will ask, what is the occupancy of Juma, which is a Friday prayer? And immediately jump back to, what about the rest of the week? What about a funeral service? And then jump back to, okay, you answered that question, now you're back here, right? So as a citizen, and I will disclaim, I'm part of the congregation here, it is, it is just as hard for you guys to follow as it is for us citizens to follow. So if the, if a board member could answer, how do you want that broken out?
I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I hear your question. I'm not really sure how it can be answered. The questions from the board members are asked based upon the testimony that is brought to them. It, there's definitely times that the board members may be asking the same question again because maybe a, a different testimony might have brought up that, a question or an issue or, or, you know, they might have forgotten the testimony, so they're re-questioning it. I mean, this board is, wants to know what the peak demand is for parking and attendance for all services. And that's some of the, one of the things that we were asking because this board might not fully understand what that demand is, what those services are, which services have a higher demand than others, what times are those services? That's what, and I think you're, the applicant's attorney is going to provide a, a document that's going to help this board, but without having that, sometimes the questions do get re-asked because they don't know, and we're trying to get that information.
Thank you. That's all I wanted was the clarification of it. I think it's hard for everyone.
Go ahead.
My time's up. I have one more question.
Are you done?
No, I had one more question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was saying that was it for that question.
I thought you were done.
No. One more thing. I've been following these hearings since whenever they began and closer to the beginning of the year, and I believe the board members are asking people-to-park ratio. And from within my own memory and notes, and I can't quote what hearing it was, but we did, the applicant did provide testimony of what the congregation currently is, and that was an issue because it might grow. And when plans and people, people-to-parking spots was adjusted, we're now going back to whether it's needed or not. So if the board can also clarify that, so that we can follow along to, because we're going from, okay, this was your congregation number to the applicant, and they testified to that and what they needed for that. And then we grew to like, okay, how much are you expected to grow now? And make testimony on that, which caused confusion. And now we're circling back to like, wait, why are you giving us this higher number? But to my logic, what I'm understanding is that there is a congregation number, and the first problem was, why is the building so big for that congregation? And now it's, because this is a traffic hearing, why is the building so big and what, how many spots are needed for it? But one question is leading to a different set of plans that's leading to another question, and then the board is circling back around and the public is circling back around from both sides. I'm not signaling anyone out to what, how these questions are being answered. So I just. So I just wanted to know if the applicant or the board could just, you know, be like, this is the number we need and this is where it's going to go. And then if there is alternate plans needed, then are you, is the board willing to accept the applicant to have different number of plans? And can the applicant provide us with different number of plans, like A, B, and C, that would be reviewed?
Uh, I, I've just, uh, initially, I'm just going to start with the point of clarification because this is actually technically supposed to be questions of the applicant's witnesses that were presented, not questions of this board. There will be opportunity at the very end to ask questions or comments generally. Right now, technically, I'm going to repress your question, but technically, it's supposed to be just be of the witnesses that were presented of the applicant. This is not questioning of the boards. But I will respond just to that, to point, because it is a valid point. That is part of the issue that the board is having as well, and, and even the board's professional is trying to understand because there has been different revisions of the plans. In fact, uh, the applicant acknowledges that there is a, a version of the plans that the board actually doesn't have. You know, it was dropped. So there is a confusion, and that's why we're kind of circling around because, you know, the board's hearing one testimony here, testimony there, that might be slightly different, and we're trying to figure out what the final number. Uh, there was some questioning of the planner as to, to need versus what is being proposed because that goes to planning justification for variance. That doesn't go for, for necessarily what is being proposed is whether or not you should be proposing or not. It was a question more for planning as to justification for, uh, for the variances, whether that's good planning or bad planning and, and, and supporting of the variance. So it's a different question than just saying, do you, you know, you shouldn't be asking for that type of space. That's not what's the question.
No problem. Thank you.
Uh, but, but.
I'm asking for clarification for both sides.
Right, and it is, it is some confusion.
As confusing over here as it is there. And I have one last question for SP Parking, Mr. Liu, I believe his name is. And I wanted to know, you said your minimum staffing versus optimal staffing, um, they were below and above ground. And we kind of understand the below ground would need some kind of training to operate the lifts, uh, shuttle the cars or valet the cars. But could you answer what the above ground is doing? And if they actually did not exist to one of your questions, would it actually stop usage of the lifts? Or could the operation still happen without the two people or three people above ground?
Got to come back up. You got to come back up and take the mic. And you're done with your questions, right?
Yeah, this is last.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I spoke to three people above ground. Generally, they, they would be directing traffic and sort of, uh, screening vehicles. Uh, previously, we spoke of, uh, oversized vehicles parking up top, for example. Um, generally, I would say that we could do with two, three is ideal. Um, but no, it would not, it would not stop the operation.
Those are not required.
One would not, losing one would not be mission critical. Two would be, you know, a, a decent number. Stick out.
Thank you.
You and then you. I did call on you. I didn't know she was waiting. It, you figure it out. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lisa Michelle. I live on Main Street. Um, I'm finding a very hard time understanding how any traffic study can approve increased traffic on Ernston Road in any capacity. I've grown up here my entire life. And I think that, um, people are putting their heads in the sand regarding the impact that the traffic will have. I also find to the previous speaker, it is very difficult to follow all of this. Um, because every, every time we come here, there's something different. There's something added. Um, so I, I'm not even sure where we're at with this. I don't understand why, um, you're not planning for the future. Any business plan has projections. We are going through a lot of effort. You're going through a lot of effort, a lot of expense for a forty-fourth square, forty-four thousand square foot property. And we're focusing on Friday. You're not building a forty-four thousand square foot property just to accommodate Friday. You're building it to accommodate seven days a week, twelve months out of the year. I cannot imagine that this community center and religious site will remain empty and not being used. They are, there is no clarity as to how this building would be used. And I don't understand how we've gotten this far without any clear planning as to the use of this building. There has to be projections.
I believe Mr. Sacks said when he comes back that he will have a.
I understand that, but people have been here. It's ten, it's ten fifteen. You guys have put in a lot of time. You guys have been here all night. This is ridiculous. At this point, this far into the process, nobody knows what is being proposed and why. And now we're quibbling over parking spots like this. We don't need a variance. We don't need a vari- well, a five thousand square foot property for Madison Park is sufficient for the mid, for the, for the main purpose of this site. But we need a forty-four square foot commercial property with underground parking that a five thousand square foot property would, would accommodate. Reducing the size of this building or buildings would, would alleviate concerns that I guess we're not allowed to address just yet. And I think that we all deserve an opportunity to get an overview of this from start to finish. Because listening to that, there might be activity in the evenings, whether on the weekend or during the week. I do not think, particularly when you're talking about the general purpose, the inherent beneficial use and general promotion of general welfare. I do not think that it is in the promotion of the general welfare or an inherently beneficial use to impose a forty-four thousand square foot commercial sized site on these residents. I don't care if it's a supermarket. I don't care if it's a church, a synagogue, a mosque, an Amazon hub. It is inappropriate. It is a square peg in a round hole. There are plenty of other appropriate sites for that.
You have not asked a question yet. This is for questions of the witnesses.
When are we going to get a holistic view of what this property is being planned for? Any business plan has projections. They keep saying, we don't know, we don't know, we don't know. They don't need forty-four thousand square feet to accommodate three, four hundred people.
This is the time for questions of the witnesses.
About their planning and their future use of the site. It's, what are the, why are they trying to acquire additional property for future growth?
You're out of order right now. This is, once again, this is questions of the witnesses.
Um, this, go ahead, and then you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Carmazin, 322 Ernston Road. I live across the street. I have a question for the planner, actually. Oh, did he step out?
No, he's here.
I was reading through the Saraville Municipal Land Use on page 173, code 2665, under Environmental Impact Assessment, Alternatives in Section F. A discussion of site design and project location alternatives that were considered shall be provided, shall indicate, indicate why an alternative was rejected if it would have less of a negative impact than the proposed development. It's my understanding, they showed about ten properties to you guys and you declined them all. Now, if it showed less of a negative impact, you have to give a really good reason other than, well, we just bought the property there, because I think that's what Mr. Sacks said in the previous meeting. So like, what's the reason for turning down all these alternate sites that were presented?
First of all, I don't know about the alternate sites. I wasn't involved.
I thought you were the planner. Oh.
I, I am. I can tell you what the law tells me in terms of that. Consideration of availability of alternate sites is not a reason for denial of a variance application.
Yeah, but it says that you must provide a, a good rea- a, a reason why these were declined. If it shows less of a negative impact on the community, i.e. Ernston Road, Samstall School. They push the, the prayer times up now. Uh, Samstall gets out half day at 1:15. And I think they said their second prayer service is at 1:20. So half days on Fridays, it's going to be gridlocked. How do, how do we accommodate that?
It sounds to me like what you're reading from is part of an environmental impact statement or a community.
Saraville Municipal Land Use Code, yeah.
And this application has been deemed complete to the extent that's in there. Um, I've given you the reason why I don't consider alternate sites as part of my planning conclusions. My planning analysis relates to this use on this property here. And based on all of the evidence, my conclusion, it's not going to cause a substantially adverse impact. Terms of traffic, parking, circulation, environmental, um, and all of the things that zoning is intended to protect. This application lines up very well with the ordinance, with, which those controls are put in to protect the public.
Okay, um, all right. I guess we're not getting answers on that, uh, because you weren't involved with that.
I wasn't involved.
Mr. Sacks, do you have an answer for that?
I'm not testifying, so.
Oh, but you gave a lot of testi- okay, you gave a lot of testimony. Um, so, um, my next question is the hours. We're going to have hour, we're going to have the hours of operation next meeting?
Yeah, we, we did provide hours at the April meeting, but we'll, I know that you wanted more clarity.
Yeah, something right, like, you know.
Well, the board wanted more clarity as to the hours and the uses of the particular rooms, and we'll provide that.
Okay. Um, also, we didn't really touch on the weddings and funerals. I thought in the beginning of all this, they said they weren't having that. Now all of a sudden, they're saying we're having.
Sir, what they, what they had testified was that ritual activity, uh, certainly funerals will occur because if you look at the plan, it, it provides for, I'm going to be polite and say, uh, an area for the transportation of a deceased.
Right. So what's peak look like?
And, and so it, ritual funeral, ritual wedding will take place. What the witness testified is that there will not be receptions or we might refer to as a repass or activities such as that at the site. And they, and, and if the application were to be granted, I believe that the applicant has already represented that they would agree that that would be a condition of any application. Is that correct, Mr. Sacks?
Correct.
Okay, um, I got one other question. We still haven't found a good comparison to other mosques around this size in New Jersey. About forty-four thousand square feet, like Cranberry Road or, you know, like as far as their traffic patterns. And do we have a comparison at all?
We have submitted counts from two other mosques. Uh, we did that with the understanding that the data there was going to be used towards establishing how many occupants are in each vehicle. So we tried to go with something in relatively close proximity. We, we counted the site when it was in operation. We counted the site at the fire hall. We've had a, to be honest with you, difficulty in finding an apples to apples match because it's not only the size of the overall building, it's providing the same amenities being along the same road and then also demographically similar to Ernston Road. So, um, from my analysis, uh, and in my professional opinion, I believe the data collected at the site and at the fire hall is more relevant than something three towns over, which is a different size and it, on a different type of roadway and has different, uh, amenities included within it. So it's not, and I had said this to the board before, it's not something where you've got a million different, um, coffee establishments and you can find one that's pretty close. Uh, you know, here mosques are fewer and further in between.
Okay, uh, what about buses? Did we, did we land that there will be busing for like maybe the children or for other people to come in? Is there going to be buses going onto that property?
Well, children are going to be transported by their parents, so that, that's for Sunday school.
All right. So no buses then?
No buses for children. Uh, I think we spoke about buses. Um, we spoke about buses, perhaps if there's a need for off-site parking for Ramadan. Um, and we'll clarify that in our correspondence to you.
All right. Mr. Sacks, one other question, if I can butt in. There's a, there's a mosque on Cranberry Road in East Brunswick. Is that too far away?
No, the mosque, there's a mosque on, on Dunham's Corner Road in East Brunswick, which we did analyze.
Well, the one on Cranberry Road is rather new.
Yep.
It's in between the new warehouses. It's the road that goes into James.
Ridge Road is the cross.
It's, it's not a mosque. It's a, it's a, it's a Hindu temple.
Is it? My mistake, my mistake.
Yeah, it's a Cranberry and 522.
Is, is that different uses?
It's a different religion.
Yeah.
I know it's a different religion.
Uh, different, yeah.
I mean, for traffic study, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, it, it's got different dynamics. I don't know the particulars of how it operates. Um, yeah.
So Ramadan is going to be held at this site because you originally said it was going to be off-site?
No, we said that the, uh, the holy days, which are Eid and several other days, would be conducted off-site.
And I don't know, wait, 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 stop, please stop, please stop. I'm, I'm trying to talk here. Uh, I just want to know, like, what does peak at Ramadan look like? The app, how late does Ramadan run? Because it operated across the street from my house and it was all hours of the night, just so. And I, I want to ask the board, am I allowed to submit photos? Because I have a lot of evidence of what happened when they were operating.
You're, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, we're a- after the conclusion of their testimony. So when they're done, they essentially rest, for lack of a better term. Then it gets opened up to public comment. Uh, general co- you're not limited to testimony, just questioning testimony. And you can present exhibits at that time. You have to provide copies to the applicant as well so they can make any objections or comments to those. But yes, at that time, you can provide evidence or, or other documentation to the board.
Excellent, excellent. Uh, one last thing, and I'm, I'll, I'll leave. I just wanted to speak to the variances a little bit, and they, they're talking about the one variance. You know, we just need the one variance for parking. But there also is a variance for a de-acceleration lane that was highly recommended by the county, probably because it's going to impact traffic. And that's another variance. And there was a variance on the sidewalks, and there's a variance on the height of the building. I mean, how many variances, you know, before it's too many?
Only talking about the, the variance related to the deceleration lane. We had talked to the county about the possibility of providing a deceleration lane, and they didn't want it at this location.
Yeah, they said it wasn't viable because we didn't have the space to open the street. But they proposed it originally, just food for thought. Thank you.
Gentlemen. Well, come up to the mic, introduce yourself and.
Wait, wait, he's saying he, Mr. Chairman, he's saying he has comments, not questions. So this is not a time for comments.
No comments, just questions. Go ahead.
Good evening. Michael Khan, 12 Vincent Street, Parlin. Questions for the planner? Plenty of questions for parking, but without the details that were supposed to be produced this evening from the last evening commitment didn't show up. It's questions missing. Are you not seeking two variances, one for sixteen in the fifty-foot setback and one for a shortage of overall parking spots?
A relief for the number of parking, for the parking supply. And what was the second?
Setback, parking in the setback?
Parking in the front, yes.
Correct. So is that not two?
All right, I'd have to go back and check if the parking location was a, a design exception. It might have been called out in the, um, engineer's report as a design. It's, variances and design exceptions are two different things. The variance has a stricter test.
If the variance, I'm assuming, I'm using the word variance, or I could be wrong, for the sixteen spots on Ernston Road setback is not granted, do you agree that there's twenty-nine less parking spots on the property?
If the variance for.
I'm sorry, there are sixteen less, there are twenty-nine on the surface lot.
If the variance for, or if the relief, I'll say, for parking location, yes, there would be fewer onsite parking.
What's the planned life of this project? How long is this building, mosque, is it going to be there?
I don't know. I'm not an architect. It looks pretty solid to me, but I'll.
When, when does your responsibility end?
Probably never.
Okay. If the, this application was approved, when would the building open?
I don't know.
Law's changing projects, future planning. We have new law coming into effect in 2027 for the sale of electric vehicles, zero emission vehicles. Who's, why? Whose commitment is it to park oversized and electric vehicles on the ground lot? Is that by code or is that by preference?
I'll, and I'm sure I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but we have state regulations with respect to EV, electric vehicle parking. And this application is not asking for any relief in that regard.
So for overall population of vehicles coming to this, we can discuss parking that's been infinitum. Without square footage being documented, there's no math calculations that can take place to have an educated conversation regarding that. So I'll leave that alone. However, in 2020, model your 2027, which starts in 2026, advanced clean car number two is the law in New Jersey, which mandates thirty-seven percent of all light vehicles sold in New Jersey be electric, which escalates to one hundred percent in 2035. How do you plan to use twenty-nine? How do you plan to use twenty-nine parking spots on the surface to answer any of the responsibilities of the overall parking of either one fifty-one or one ninety-six, or three hundred and sixty-seven, or four hundred and eighteen that's yet to be documented?
I'll give you the planning answer, there's probably a traffic answer. I see Bill writing your numbers down over there. The applicant has provided a plan based on the, what it believes the actual supply, the actual demand will be for this site. Now and in, in the, in the future, now and in the foreseeable future. If that changes going forward, I'm sure this applicant will be back in front of this board for some form of an amended site plan.
Reject the future either, but I can go by the mandates and state law that there will be no internal combustion engines sold in New Jersey in twenty-thirty-five, which begins in two years, that we don't have sufficient parking on twenty-nine parking spots to fulfill the obligation either one fifty-one or one ninety-six.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I, these are questions of this witness, but it's based on their testimony. I, I don't think they can answer any questions that are outside of what they testified before this.
So is that the traffic engineer?
It, it, well, it's a question, it would be, it's a traffic question, but I don't think it's, it, it's just a lot of speculation about future laws and requirements that this applicant might not even be required to, because it may be grandfathered in, because they've already got their approval. So I, 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 I was letting you go forward with the question, I wasn't interrupting you before, but I think it's kinda going down a line that it's just a little bit, uh, too speculative to really.
It's a, it's a law, it's been enacted, it is gonna, it is in effect, and if you, uh, I left it over there with the code numbers, I can gladly submit it. It's a law, it's in effect. It's not speculation, it's effect.
No, no, speculation as to how it may have to be, th- the site would have to be designed for planning purposes for that. That's my, was my point with that, not that, that the law was speculative.
That's it?
No, I have a.
Okay.
Uh, parking, parking queue, we had a at you, if that's a parking traffic engineer. Twenty-five vehicles parked in a queue on a drawing that we don't have. The drawings I have from February submittals are clearly indicated as a flow. What sounds to me like what's being testified is queue for parking is on C dash zero nine clearly identified as fire truck access. I don't see a dual-purpose area sufficient for both. Which one is it? Is it parking queue, or is it fire truck access?
Chairman, we, I, I can respond to that. We'll, we'll provide, we've already indicated we're gonna provide a separate exhibit in, which will delineate the queue. I believe we already provided a fire truck template, if I'm not mistaken.
C zero nine, but it did not have an overlay of parking queue on it. Is it your intention to add sidewalk as requested by Middlesex County from Ernston Road to the front of the facility?
I, I don't know that, I didn't testify to sidewalks.
Kamal, you wanna answer that?
Yeah, I thought the, uh, request for the sidewalk from Ernston Road to the front of the building was a comment from uh, Mr. Cornell, or, or possibly Mr. Fisher as well. The applicant is open to providing that sidewalk, subject to the approval from the county, so.
One eleven twenty-four, Middlesex County. H two, number eighteen. County's Vision Zero Action Plan clearly asked for it.
So the applicant is open to providing that sidewalk if the county is okay with it.
Will that reduce the amount of parking on the ground level?
That would require revision to the plan, I can't tell you that on the fly.
Do you intend to create the change the head-to-head parking to what is requested and specified by the township ordinance?
I'm, I'm not following you.
For the detail, I believe there's no head-to-head parking, I believe there's supposed to be an island between parking.
Question, why are there no islands on?
Correct.
To optimize and maximize the perimeter grading, the perimeter landscaping. We've sacrificed the internal parking landscaping in favor of having a better frame around the development.
Parking queue and the operation interaction with the parking service provider. Where do the people wait for their cars, and are there sidewalks to get for them from the building to their cars, or are they walking through traffic?
I, I believe testimony to that issue was provided by the, um, representative from the valet operator, and I don't wanna step on what they said, so I would have to defer to them. But I did, I did not speak about it.
Uh, they deferred to a future drawing depicting cars parked along the front of the building that was not provided for this evening. So it's another open-ended requirement or request.
I don't think that was requested for this meeting, but the applicant has said that they would provide a queuing exhibit. I did a quick sketch, there's no rigorous engineering, I took a scale and measured twenty-foot lengths to show the position of cars, but it's just a quick.
I didn't question your twenty-five queue, I questioned the access to the cars parked in the queue.
I, I mean, I'm not sure what the issue was. It looks like there's sidewalk all along the front of the building, adjacent to the area where the cars would be queued. Um, the, 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 where the queue wraps around along the westerly edge of the property, the, the people would walk alongside the parking stalls to get to the front of the building. Depending on the revision to the plan that shows the location of the sidewalk between Ernston Road and the front of the building, they may be able to use that sidewalk as well.
If you have sufficient parking spaces for the attendees of the services, where is the float between the two services? Where are they to wait? When the parking lot is full, where is the, is the queue between the two services going to be? There's, they had tested, uh, they testified last time, September, that it would be first in, first out, and was the intention of the operator to actually preload the cars out in front of the building, is what I derived from the testimony. What happens to the ones coming in?
The proposal is to have the two services separated by an hour. The first service will end an hour later, the second service will begin in the first half hour of that period, roughly speaking, the cars from the first service will leave the site, in the second half hour of that one-hour break, the cars for the second service will come into the property. Based on the counts that have been done at the fire hall, about two-thirds of the people coming to the property would be going to the first service, so we do not anticipate that the lifts would be needed for the second service, so it does simplify the operation for the second service a little bit.
Except if the first cars are up in the air and the second service is parked under them, how does the first service get down? So they become inoperable and non-value added for the second session if the first session is full on the bottom.
That, I, I don't think that's how it's gonna operate. I think the cars are gonna go up on the lifts first for the first service, and then park underneath.
So then when the first people come out, first service attendees leave, and the second service people is parked beneath them, how does the lift come down on top of that car?
The, there's gonna be an hour gap. All the cars, except for employees, are gonna leave the site between services, the cars for the second service are gonna come in, so the lifts will be unloaded.
There was testimony that if the parking lot was full, they would be asked to go home and circle back and come later on. So if there's twenty-five queue available, and the street is full, the parking lot queue is full, and the police officers direct them somewhere else, and they decide to go home, and they know that this service will be done in one hour, and they have an hour break, they will come back. In addition to the people who were intending to come to the second service, do you not see an overload on the second service coming into the time as well?
I, I, I don't follow your question, I feel like I've answered it three times. I, I must be missing what you're trying to tell me. I don't foresee an issue between cars exiting the first service and cars coming into the second service.
Sorry, testimony was given anywhere between one and a half to four minutes per car.
Right.
Testimony has, yes?
It was about ninety seconds per car was the testimony.
So a hundred and twenty-one parking spots available under the deck.
Right.
Divided by ninety seconds. Or multiply, multiply by ninety seconds.
Divided by the number of different teams that are bringing cars in and out of the garage. It, it's, it, think about it this way, if it takes five minutes to get through the checkout at ShopRite, you don't have a hundred people waiting in line for five minutes to get out, you have multiple checkout lanes open. You don't quite have the same situation, but you are processing multiple channels here, because you've got multiple teams bringing cars in and out of the parking garage.
Do you not have one delegated exit on the, on the holidays? The high volume, I thought you were closing one and making a, a single entrance and a single exit.
It's gonna be single entrance for the first period when the lifts are in use and the queues are wrapping around in that area, but there's not gonna be any cars exiting at that time. At the end of the service, the cars are gonna be able to use both exits, and we are not anticipating that they'll need the lifts for the second service.
Okay, that's your testimony, I would beg to differ, but that, I, I'm, I don't wanna take it up. Thank you very much.
Member Stanov.
Carol Esposito, uh, sixth Villanova Road, Parlin. Um, my question was about the police, so I'm not sure who answers that. Are you hiring police to dr- direct the traffic, or is it auxiliary?
Police Traffic Directors, Uniformed Police Traffic Directors.
Is there a signed agreement with the Searville Police Department?
There, there will be, and there'll be a condition, if in fact this application's acted favorably, that that would be the case.
So at this time, there's not a signed agreement, right?
No.
Okay, um, will the police have their lights on while they're doing the, the traffic?
I don't know what police protocol is. If it requires them to have their lights on, they certainly would have them on.
Okay, when the traffic study was discussed, um, was Old Bridge Glenwood Green considered? That development will have thousands of homes and developments already in process, and that development connects, will be connecting to Waterworks Road and Cheesecake Road. Was that development considered?
As discussed, we contacted both Old Bridge and Searville zoning officials, and they both told us that there were no projects in planning or in construction, which would should be factored into our traffic study. We do account, we did look at the arsenal study, which was provided. Uh, Mr. Cornell is going to provide two additional studies, which we'll take a look at, but we did not specifically include those or any other studies of other developments in our analysis. We did include a background growth rate, which increases the traffic volumes by two-point-seven-five percent annually over what's there now, so over two years, it's five-point-five-eight percent, if I remember my math correctly. So we did increase the traffic in the area by five-point-five-eight percent, and that's how we accounted for background traffic growth.
Okay, so what's really unique about this project, though, is you're bordering two towns. You're on the edge of Searville, you're on the edge of Old Bridge. So some of these projects are part of Old Bridge that are not necessar- like the Arsenal, which I'm not even sure what that is, is, that's part of Searville. So I'm not sure what the question was, what was the, let me ask that as a question. What was the question that you asked the Searville or the Old Bridge Planning Board about what projects? Were you asking what projects are being built on Ernston Road or a five-mile radius?
I called the zoning board official in Searville, I called the zoning board official in Old Bridge. I told him I was doing a traffic study for the proposed mosque at two sixteen Ernston Road, and asked if there were any other traffic studies for other projects in planning or in construction that I should include in my analysis, and they said no.
So you didn't ask about a certain mile radius, any projects that were, right? So just, okay.
Any, any projects that I should consider.
So then when the traffic counts were done at the Madison Park Firehouse, were the cars that park in the Madison Park neighborhood counted?
We were specifically counting the driveway, the, the parking lots adjacent to the Madison Park Firehouse.
So cars that park in the neighborhood were not counted?
There was not a count done of cars parked in the neighborhood, no.
Okay, um, and then, I, I'm not sure if this is part of this as well, but to clarify the use, that it was been discussed that nothing was gonna be happening in the afternoon rush hour. However, um, in April, Mr. Sax testified that there's school activities and after-school activity for prayer, for prayer study for the children that occurs between five and six PM on Monday through Thursday. So can somebody just clarify that, how five to six PM is not part of rush hour traffic?
My understanding is that the daily prayers which occur, and I'm the last person, person to speak about the religious aspect of it, but there's daily prayers which occur multiple times a day, and those can overlap with the morning and evening peak hours, so, or peak periods, so typically seven to nine in the morning, four to six in the afternoon. Those are much smaller than the Friday prayer services, which are the focus of the traffic study. It's something like a, a third or probably less the amount of traffic.
Right.
So aside from that, there's no other activities occurring during those peak hours.
Okay, but that's not what Mr. Sax said, and that's also what's not advertised, um, through the mosque. Last question, is there anybody that can actually explain the valet process? So if I pull up to check in my car, I leave my car, there's three people up on the surface directing traffic. There's seven people underneath doing whatever. How does my car get underground? When the guy comes up, is he running up the street? Like, how long does it take for him to come up and get the next car? Like, can somebody actually explain that process?
There, there was extensive testimony provided regarding the valet operation at the last meeting, and there was an opportunity to ask questions then. I, I, I'm not the valet expert, I'm the traffic engineer, so I can answer that for you.
All right, we have time for one more.
Good evening, my name is Imtiaz Samwala, I M T I A Z. I M, T like Tom, I A Z, last name S I A M W A L L A. Uh, I'm from eight-five-oh-five Hannah Road, Edison. Eight-five-oh-five Hannah Road in Edison. So, uh, since, uh, we are only talking about, uh, traffic and parking-related issues, I'll just address those and leave everything else that I had in mind.
Well, let me just clarify, we're not talking about, this is questions of the witnesses, so if you have a statement or something that's not for tonight, it's just questions of their witnesses relating to.
Okay, so let me, uh, just, I think the board had a question in reference to, uh, parking of a hearse. So, um, that is what, uh, I would like to, uh, talk about, and the reason I think I can.
You have to ask a question, we don't wanna hear you talking about something. Either you have a question, or you have a comment. And what we're, what we're getting at, at this late hour. Do you have a question before this board?
There is no question, but it will give clarity to the board, basically.
That, that comes at the end, when the public comment comes in.
Fair enough.
All right, go ahead, last one.
Jennifer Edwards, ten Vincent Street, Parlin. Vincent. Okay, so, um, just to follow up on the question that was asked, so last meeting, there was extensive, um, testimony given about the valet parking. Um, and during that testimony, it was discussed that vehicles over six thousand pounds would not be allowed in, on the lifts, and also electric vehicles would not be allowed under the building. Uh, my question is currently, currently, so this is not future, this is not speculation, but currently, seven of the ten, um, best-selling vehicles as of last year, twenty-twenty-three, are electric vehicles or trucks. How do you anticipate covering the need for parking with that in mind? Because if electric vehicles cannot go under the building, and trucks cannot go on the lifts, potentially can't fit under the lifts.
I don't have any information on the number of electric vehicles and trucks currently among the top ten selling vehicles. Uh, what I can tell you is that the intention is to have the larger vehicles, handicap vehicles, park in the surface area. Um, I don't recall the comment about electric vehicles, but the, the, uh, the site is designed to accommodate the volume of traffic. We're anticipating to accommodate the amount of parking. We did not look at the constitution of the vehicles as the services currently exist at the fire hall, and I, I don't know that there is, um, you know, any requirement. I think it's out of an abundance of caution that the applicant is saying that the electric vehicles will be parked outside.
Don't we still have the parking guy here? Cause he's the one that said it. Can we call him back up to answer the question?
Mr. Chairman, I think we went through this at the last hearing. I mean, obviously, our, our.
We didn't all get a, a chance to ask our questions last time, so.
Well, what, what is your specific question? He's certainly here, but what, what is your question? Because I, if it was addressed at the last hearing, I don't think there's a need to rehash it. My recollection of his testimony is that electric vehicles would be parked outside, and larger vehicles would be parked outside as well.
So I guess my question is then, if seven of, or seventy percent of the new cars being sold are not going to work with lifts.
are not going to work with lifts, or potentially be parked underground, how are the 45 total, or 43, I don't know exactly, but the number is, spots outside going to accommodate the need for parking? We're going to have, and, and again, the 10-year plan, how is that going to be accommodated?
I'm not sure that's something the valet could answer. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, I, I don't, excuse me again, I, I, can I?
Go ahead, Fish, please.
Thank you. I don't think this board can take judicial notice of anything regarding what the seven top 10, seven out of the top 10 vehicles are. Our testimony was that electric vehicles will be, will be parked outside, and that the larger vehicles will not be on top of a lift.
So my question is whether or not that 40, those 45 spots are going to be sufficient in any way. Additional question, just for the traffic person, so Samsel Upper Elementary School, early dismissal is 1:00 p.m., and elementary schools are let out at 1:35, which both fall into that window between 1:00 and 2:00 p.m. Has it ever been considered to do a traffic study that includes early dismissal?
No. The school is scheduled to have, the Samsel School is scheduled to have two early dismissals on Friday this school year. There were, from my recollection, five or six Fridays where there was no school from the September to June school year, and then the entire summer they're off. So will it occur on occasion? Yes. Is it a significant issue? No. It, it's going to be far outweighed by the number of Fridays when there's no school at all.
Understood that it's not going to be a common occurrence, but it is very, very, very bad at 1:00 p.m. on those early dismissal dates. Last question. If police are directing traffic, where are they going to park their car? We have a one-lane in each direction road, and where's their car going to go?
I, I'm sure they'll find a place, I'm completely confident of that.
I'm sure they will, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That then ends tonight.
Motion to adjourn? Oh, is he done? Is Larry?
Ready? Do you have anything, Larry?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think we probably just need to set a date for the next hearing.
All right. At that, the next open meeting that we have is November 6th, would you, no?
I think we, I think I may have discussed with, that the meeting after that would be December 4th.
All right, I have a personal problem with December 4th, I get my knee operated on that day. I have no problem giving it to the vice chair, I just want everybody to know that if we have it on December 4th, you won't see me here. Okay? And if it goes on to anywhere else, I mean, if I can hook up to these guys, I will during the course of that meeting, but this is an operation I've put off for two, two years, just happens to be that day, so.
Stand, Mr. Chairman.
What's our, what's our pleasure? I, I can make the 15th of January, if I got to get crawled up there.
Is there another meeting in December?
No.
That's it. Mr. Chairman, why don't we list it now for December 4th, and if we, if there's an issue?
I have no problem with that, I just want to be upfront with everybody, I mean, I've sat here as long as, and I don't want to go through this, but my next operation is in the end of February, and that messes up spring golf, so that's not happening.
So I, I think for what we're hearing is, we're going to, the, the public hearing is going to be carried to just the December 4th, 2024 Planning Board meeting. If there is a reason that we need to adjourn it or, or further than either at that meeting, notice will be provided to the public that it is being carried further. If that meeting doesn't go forward for some whatever reason, then they would have to be noticing for the next following meeting, but as of right now, the public hearing on this application is being carried to the December 4th hearing, excuse me, Planning Board meeting, and no further public notice is required.
Thank you.
Same time, it'll be at 7:30, and it'll be at this location.
Open up to the public? I make a motion, open up to the public? Second? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public like to speak?
Not on this application, this is just general comments.
General comments on anything?
It can't be on this application, that's separate.
Can't be on this application. Anybody like to speak? Go ahead.
Am I allowed to speak, or are you finished today?
No, we're not finished.
Excuse me, everyone, sorry, Mr. Chairman, we're still, the public meeting is actually still going on, so if you have any conversations, please take it outside. Right now, we are on public comment for any items outside of the jurisdiction of this application, not any pending application, just any general comments within this board's jurisdiction. Questions regarding master plan, future developments, other items, can't be about this application or any other pending application.
I have a comment regarding the application.
Well, no, that's not this, that's not this public comment period.
It's not under that, anybody else have any? You'll get your chance, it's just not now.
Can I say something to you?
No.
As, as just.
No.
No, that's, it's not appropriate to hear outside of the public hearing on the application, it's inappropriate for this board to hear comments outside of the actual public hearing of the application.
Anybody else have any questions of this board on due? Go ahead.
Actually, it's not a question, I, it's only one point regarding the interruptions that is being happened every time, so I'm just kindly asking you, please, to use your jurisdiction in order to control this, please, starting from next meeting at least, we have the people here from the law enforcement, so we can have better control of this, please, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any comments? Having none, I'll make a motion, I need a motion to close the public. Make a motion to close the public. Second? Having a second and hearing no repeats, can, can I have a roll call? All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? See everybody December 4th.